Hello, Ms. Janey.
Hey, Kevin. How we doing tonight?
We're doing good. We're doing good. How's your knee?
My knee's doing pretty good. I took a bad fall the next day after surgery and I've really hurt myself. I've got a bunch of fractures in my face.
Oh, no.
A little breath.
I hope you get speedy recovery.
Thank you. Me too. I don't know how people box for a living because this is right painful.
Yeah. Understand that.
Everything out your way looks really nice.
Thank you. Thank you. We got news the other day. Those containers are hopefully in the next week or so will be gone. So they finally got a company to move them.
Well, that's good. Are they full?
No, they're empty. They just been been four or five peoples said that they would remove them and then decided not to. So yeah, they backed out on it.
Oh, yeah, that happens. If you see me nodding off, say something. I just took some of that medication.
Oh, yeah. I tell you, I don't see how people do stuff like it because I can't function. I know when I had that surgery, they give me just a load of Tylenol threes and I couldn't function on them. So I don't see how people I don't see how people do what they do and do do that.
Most people don't want to work, don't really care about anything.
Yeah.
I think my knee, I think my knee's doing okay. It's just.
Yeah.
I banged banged myself up pretty good.
Yeah. Now, they now have you started physical therapy or anything?
Yes, yeah, I started last week, last Wednesday and Friday and I went today. I gotta get my, it knocked the wind out of me and I'm not used to this. I'm pretty much a go getter, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's gonna take a little bit. Where did council go?
Oh, hey, they're people's coming in now.
Oh, I see it up here on the screen. Mr. Boo.
Hey, Mark.
Hello, everyone.
You doing okay?
Yes, ma'am. How about you?
Hanging in there.
Good.
How are you, Mr. Mark?
Hey, I'm doing good. How you doing, Kevin?
Doing good.
Yeah. I see you got some sun like I do.
It's a it's a demolition that's on the agenda that.
You want to speak to it now or you get to it?
No, when we get to it, you can tell them. Discuss that. It's.
I think they got me pretty mad the other day last week.
All right, boys, it's 6:30. Let's roll this.
Right here.
I lost my watch.
It's just now 6:30.
6:32.
Mine says 6:30.
We'll call this meeting of the Oak Hill City Council to order for September 13th, 2021, 6:30. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Mayor Daniel E. Wright.
Here.
Counsel at Large Oxley.
Here.
Counselors from Ward One, Diana Janey.
Here. Can you hear me?
David Perry. Yes, yes, we can hear you.
Present.
Counselors from Ward Two, Steve Hazlett.
Here.
Charles Smallwood, Jr.
Here.
Benitez Jackson.
Here.
The invocation tonight will be offered by Bishop Sam Callaway of the Spirit and Truth Ministry Church, and the pledge of allegiance will be led by Councilman Hazlett following the invocation. Please stand.
I pray, Father, we thank you that we have the Lord standing amongst the political representatives of this city, Lord, and speak your name. Father, when we speak your name, everything changes. You will now, therefore, as a person in this space, Father, we pray that you will sovereignly reign over every decision that's made for this great city that we live in. We thank God you will send us in a great city called Oak Hill. We take pride in your honor. We hear you, God, as you sent us here, Lord. We promise you, Lord, we're gonna make this a city that feels proud. Always represent you with respect and absence. I pray God you will bless every decision. If there's a decision needs to be made, as a person, I will stop, I will ask you. As long as we know you are the chief of all things, and you wouldn't tell us to do anything that was wrong. I pray God you will bless all those that represent us throughout the city, bless our city, our churches, bless our homes. In his name and prayer. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America.
The reading and approval of minutes. Is there a motion regarding that?
Mayor, I'd move that the minutes be accepted as having been presented in writing prior to.
For a second.
I'll second that motion, Mayor.
And property moved in second. Any discussion? Hearing then, we vote the motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed, no.
It was Diana.
Okay. Thought somebody voted no. The treasures report. Is there a motion regarding yet?
Mayor, I move we accept the treasure report as presented by the city clerk, auditor, bookkeeper.
Covered it all.
I'll second that lengthy motion.
I move to second. We accept the treasures report as presented. Any discussion? Hearing then, we vote the motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed, no. Motion's agreed to. Six zero, I guess. Madam Clerk, any correspondence to the city council or mayor?
No mayor.
Brings us now to citizens' comments. We have three people who've signed up. Krista Hodges, you're first with Destination Downtown Report.
Good evening, everyone. So I just have two things for you this evening. First is we are making progress on our historic kiosks. So everybody's been working on gathering information and turning things into Adam as they complete them. The second, we were gonna wait, I was gonna wait until we were completely finished, but we're 98% finished. So I wanted to go ahead and share with everybody that Destination has built a visitor's website for the city of Oak Hill to highlight all of our assets, our businesses, our parks. We've hired a professional company, photographers, a tourism writer. So we're 98% of the way done. We have one more tab, the events tab that I've been working on, and some more pictures that we need to get completed. So I just wanted to share that because we're all really proud of it and it's gonna be very amazing when it's finished. But right now, that's all we have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Aaron Runyon, a demolition order for Broadway Avenue. Mr. Hannah Bass, you have something to say about that one?
We can, we can talk about that when it comes up in the is. What's the name again?
Aaron Runyon.
Aaron, are you, oh, okay. Okay, we can talk about that when the item comes up if you want. Remind me. Thank you.
All right. Ms. Farish, demolition for 312 Main Street.
Is it on there as well?
That would be the same.
Same one. You want to speak now or wait till the time? It's being discussed.
Will.
All right, go ahead.
Ms. Farish, demolition 312 Main.
Thank you. My clients are concerned about this demolition order. Mr. Hannah Bass was nice enough to clarify. There was some confusion about which property it was. It seems that the property that we're talking about that needs to be demolished is behind the building originally thought. And so that's been cleared up and we appreciate that. And thank you. My clients would need some time to make sure that they were able to get some estimates for the demolition. And they also need to get a survey because I think there's some question as to whether or not this is in city limits or out of city limits. And I think they just need to get a survey, quite frankly, anyway, because of this type of confusion. And so as long as the council is amenable to allowing them a little bit of time to be able to talk to some excavating companies, but also too to put to bed this boundary line issue.
I think it's it's pretty easy to tell from the parcel number or the parcel ID. If you if you look at it, depending upon what district it is, and it clearly shows that parcel inside the city limit.
Yes.
But I don't think, I mean, you can get a survey and that's fine. No problem with that. But as far as determining in or out of the city, I believe that's clear.
Yep. I think it would just make my clients feel better just to go ahead and put that issue to bed in their own heads and go forward with the demolition. They don't dispute that it needs to be done. There is a question. I'm not sure if anybody can answer this on, or Mr. Hannah Bass, you might be able to. How did you come to to find that back property? Because it's a bit landlocked there.
Mayor, again, where the point of of public comment and discussion should occur at the time of the presentation of the, I would ask that we continue to honor that.
Yes.
Last meeting, we talked about that and.
I think they didn't have their, they were down here to talk and and I think that they had their choice. They want to say now or wait till then, one or the other.
Okay.
So if you want to continue.
So we're gonna limit it to three minutes, huh?
Well, yeah, well, just.
Forgive me. I just, that is the only question my clients have.
That is? Okay.
Okay, the property is visible from adjoining properties.
Okay.
And it was, and I honest to gosh, I can't, I've known about the structure there for three or four years.
Okay. Very good. All right. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
The address is not 312. Okay, it's behind 312. Yes. Yes. And it's it's clear, I think. I think from the letter you received, Joy, it should be clear. I'm sorry about the confusion. But it's definitely not the house with green siding that that is a front, that fronts Main Street is the structure behind it. And and I think it's pointed out on that map that I sent you with a, where there's a red square on the map that clearly shows that on that structure that's, and in fact, we have photographs of it here that are that are record of the city. You'll see in a minute. So I don't think. Yeah. I don't blame you for your, I don't blame you for your concern whatsoever.
Mr. Perry.
Mayor, since we're asking questions, did I understand councils to say that the parties would would cover the expense of the raising of the facility? No, well, I, no, I just, I thought I heard you say that and commit to that. That's why. No. No. And I understand that you, even with what Mr. Hannah Bass said, you still want to do a survey? Okay, so you'll you'll get back with Mr. Hannah Bass? And and if you do the excavation, then you feel like you need an extended amount of time? Do you have some idea what that extended amount of time may be? Okay.
We'll get in a little bit to.
Thank you, Mayor.
Process during the.
Thank you.
During the agenda, we'll go over some timeframes. Okay?
Okay, thank you. Mr. Ayers?
I have a couple of questions. I haven't been to the last couple of meetings. Bill, has there been any progress on that meeting with DHHR about the building down there? We were trying to arrange a meeting.
The DHHR in which building? I'm sorry, Ms. Farish.
The facility above Dominus.
Oh, no, they have not gotten back in touch with me after I reported it the last time here. Council had requested a fence around the structure and they got back to me about what the code is in the city for fences. I responded to that and they said that they would build a, I'm going from memory, two or three months ago, Jim, but a fencing area on one end of the structure, but not all the way around the.
But they haven't responded to having a meeting with the public about.
No. The facility.
Yeah, I thought they did, but they didn't want to do that.
They didn't want to do that. No.
They don't, they're not gonna do it.
No.
That was their response.
Right.
All right. And the other thing is, going back even further, about six months ago, at a city council meeting, we were talking about Mission Avenue, turn it into one-way street. And we were supposed to contact the state because part of it's state-owned, part of it's city-owned. Has there been any progress on that?
City council turned that down. Voted that down.
So they're gonna leave it a two-way street?
Correct.
Is there any way they can reconsider it? Because that's, that's a real big problem there.
Well, council has voted to have it remain as a two-way street and considered it and discussed it once.
Well, because of Mr. Plin's property, where the stop sign is located, you gotta swing real wide. If you're coming out to Main Street, you gotta, the person coming out's gotta turn into a parking lot. And I mean, there's a lot, there's a lot of problems right there.
Right. And there was a lot of opposition to it as well, if I remember, when the council voted to have it remain two-way.
Is that, is that by Little Caesars?
Yeah. Right beside the.
Okay, I thought you were talking about the one.
By West Virginia Tech.
Right, yeah.
When was that vote taken?
I can't recall off the top of my head, Jim, but you're about right, about six months ago or so. Anybody else remember exactly off the top of your head?
That vote was taken before I came on. I came on in January, so.
Yeah, I've been at every meeting except the last two.
When I lived out there, once upon a time, it was one-way.
Was that done in private or?
No, it's not done in private. There's never been a vote in history in the city of Oak Hill taken in private.
Okay.
I don't think it could even even got a even got a motion or a second. I'm sure it didn't. On, that's when I asked for a motion. Yeah, I think you turned it down. You wouldn't even make a motion to to vote on it. You just turned it down flat. So it didn't even get a vote. It was turned down right off the bat.
So nobody made a motion to?
You have to have a motion a second to continue and no one, I received none.
All right. And the last thing, I know you're gonna be trying to select a new city council member. I mean, I know my vote don't matter, but I think we need some new blood. And I think Krista Hyde, all she does for the city would be a good choice. That's my opinion.
Thank you, Mr. Ayers. That concludes the citizens' comments. Now to the to the department reports. We'll start with the with Chief Wissman of the Oak Hill Police.
Mayor pointed personal privilege prior to the comments.
Yes, sir.
You know, I'd just like to say, we address each one of these departments each time. And I'd like to say I took Council Oxley's advice and I've spent some time with Mr. Hannah Bass. Folks, prior to January, I don't think I realized the magnitude of lot of work that the city employees do, that Mr. Hannah Bass does, the chief of police, the fire chief, and Day Day. And each time we've committed and the meeting. So having spent some time here, it's amazing. He's like a bookie. He's got a telephone answering six calls. He's got me spending time half an hour. That's that's Mr. Hannah Bass. And like I said, Tyler, all these folks, man, when you come up here, they're busy as bees. They're overwhelmed, really. So I'd just like to compliment all of on their service to the city and the commitment and dedication they have. And as well, I'd like to share with the chief, I had a citizen approach me and say they got stopped by an officer. They didn't know his name. I asked him that. They said he was a tall, skinny officer. But they were very complimentary. They said he was very thorough. He was very professional. And they respected him stopping them, but they also very much respected the mannerism in which he presented himself. So chief, I think you need to know that. Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Perry, did you say the chief was like a bookie or?
That's Mr. Hannah. The chief wasn't supposed to hear that.
All right, for the month of August 2021, had 424, sorry, glasses. 424 calls for service, 362 of those were general service, 11 felonies, 33 misdemeanors, five incidents, total of 13 accidents, issued 283 citations. 13 of those were for traffic control device, issued 60 warnings, three parking violations, traveled a total of 17,500 miles, used 1,400 gallons of fuel, had six felony arrests, 35 misdemeanor arrests, for a total of 41 arrests.
Questions, questions of the chief?
Good job, sir.
Thank you, sir. I have a question. Last meeting we discussed, Steve, this is your ball. The acquisition of the.
I'm sorry, I did touch base with Steve on that because I knew it was in his field today. Those are last week where we're getting demos. This week, we're getting more demos. As soon as the demos are done, we'll make a decision.
Thank you, chief.
Chief, I was, I presented a proclamation from the city to the 9/11 memorial event Saturday at the old football field, which is I think sponsored in in part by Bishop Sam Callaway's church. And I went down there to present a proclamation from this, from the office of the mayor and of the city council of that they had requested. And I was talking to two of your officers down there. They told me they lived in Nicholas County and I was talking to them for a little bit. And I just want to tell you just how professional they they were. And also what a nice shiny police car you had down there. Looked like a mirror. And I was just very impressed. And I also told them that I also am impressed that I see you everywhere, the police everywhere. To have 18 officers, it seems like you have tripled that or something because they're everywhere. And I made comment to them that I appreciate it seeing, seeing the police out and about virtually every place in Oak Hill. So I just want to pass that on to you from last Saturday night down football field. Thank you. All right, who's the fire chief? Is he here? Tim Richardson?
Good evening. For the month of August, the fire department had a total of 23 callouts. Department callouts, four restructure fires, one brush fire, one trash fire, one water rescue, one natural gas leak, one carbon monoxide incident, one false alarm, five general fire alarms, two public assists, and six motor vehicle accidents.
You say false alarm there, chief. Can you give an example of that, of what that was?
That can be an activation of an alarm in a residential structure. It's activated through 911 and we're called to respond to that. Residents might not even realize their alarm is set off. And a lot of times, you know, it's, a lot of times, it's just electronics, a lot of times, power failures, weather related, can be a lot of different incidences. But when they ring in, you know, 911, we have to go.
Do you have anyone who intentionally does that?
No, sir. Not that I'm aware of. Not yet.
Not yet. Okay. Thank you.
Chief Richardson, I'd just like to comment on the the Oak Hill and other fire departments that participated in the memorial on 19th for Trooper Siner. I think it's very fitting and proper that we do those type of things. Like taking way too soon.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you, appreciate it.
Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I, I understand that we had an incident or accident, I'll call it an accident during a sports fest. I understand that there was a directive put out responsibly and in the interest of the city. Uh, declaring that fire trucks would no longer be able to participate in parades. I don't know of a city in the state of West Virginia. I don't know of a city in Fayette County and even the United States that fire trucks, and I respect, again, the city manager position he took. That don't allow fire trucks in the parades. And when you get right down to it. Many of our units are fire trucks. And many of our children ride on these fire trucks. And many of the constituency vote for levies to support these fire trucks environment. So I would like to request. That the chief prepare an inquiry on the accident. Present it to council with a recommendation to ensure this wouldn't occur in the future. I can put that in a motion or just a simple request, whichever is appropriate, mayor.
I think you do as a request. Because since the gent, the gent is already here and there's no place for that, but I think, I think it can be done by request.
Do you have any problems with that, chief?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
I, I will add that city, city manager and I have been in discussion in regard to this incident. We have a policy in place that anytime a. Vehicle is moving, especially if it's backing, they have a, a ground man is referred to where a firefighter is outside the back of the vehicle. This particular vehicle happened to be backing up two feet to pull out into the line of the parade. And, uh, I also add that, uh. After this incident occurred. Assistant chief and I discussed this. We just discussed it with our fire line officers. And currently we have backup cameras on two of our units, our ladder truck and our newest rescue. And, uh, we're going to look into a quote. This was early last week. And we'll get a quote to equip the rest of our engines with backup cameras.
Well, I think I heard you say you have a policy in place and the policy wasn't really.
Yes, sir.
Adhered to.
Yes, sir.
So it sounds to me like, you know, I'm satisfied with the report I'm hearing now that wouldn't be necessary in this council meeting. Uh, but.
So do you still want the report?
No, no, I, I, I think if, if this gets entered into the minutes proper, uh, as the chief presented, I think it's adequate to. Claim the position, the current or what have.
Right. So are you guys in a parade on?
I'm confused.
From, uh, high school?
Well, at this time, I have a directive from Mr. Hannabass that we're not to participate at this time in any, any activity except official fire calls.
We need to, I think we need to look into that, like we were just talking about. Uh, we were just talking about, we, we, I think we need our fire trucks to participate in parades. I don't think it's gonna be much of a. Parade without fire truck there. So I mean, what do we need to do to get that? Uh, while we're kind of.
Several, several reasons. I think we, this was gonna take a minute if you all wanted to discuss it. Several reasons. Um, I know. Fire trucks are customary in parades in Oak Hill and other places. I know that and I'm fully aware of that. We have vehicles that cost seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, single vehicles. When you see a parade with fire trucks go by, you see millions of dollars of equipment. Not only is it a great safety hazard, those are large vehicles. They don't mix with pedestrians. These vehicles are at risk. Of damage. You know, first and foremost is bodily injury from a pedestrian that we dodged a bullet. I'll forward you those medical bills I expect to receive from that very slight injury. Second of all, like I said, is the expense of the equipment. I don't think the taxpayer paid. For ceremonial vehicles. I think they paid for a mission, mission of public safety. One of these vehicles in a parade. Are at risk. Of damage being taken out of service. The other risk is that. When these vehicles have pedestrian or have. Members of the community on them, like the cheerleaders and all that, it, it gives me a warm and fuzzy feeling, I have to admit. I've been involved in parades. For a long, long time. But. When they're loaded down with passengers, that vehicle in essence is taken out of commission for its mission and that's our public safety. I've seen. Cheerleading squad have to dismount from a vehicle. Uh, because there was a fire call. It wasted precious minutes for someone who was in distress. I have seen the workers' compensation claims. From injuries received in dismounting large vehicles, including fire trucks right here. We paid largest, large sums of money for that. And those are trained firefighters, not the. The, uh, citizens that ride on them once a year, once a lifetime. I, I have no problem with council overriding my decision. My decision's a smart decision. The safe decision and a decision that saves taxpayers and keeps our mission first and foremost. But I have no problem.
It kind of sounded like it could have been avoided if we would have just followed the policies of the place.
I, I think so, you know, I mean, it, it was a, it was a matter of the trucks being lined up. And this lady and gentleman walking behind the vehicle. And it was a slight nudge. It wasn't like she was hit. The vehicle wasn't backing up at two or three or four miles an hour. You know, I've been on the fire department in Oak Hill since nineteen seventy-five. And I've never had an incident like this happen. But I will tell you in regarding Mr. Hannabass's comments. I also am concerned about when we have cheerleaders, midget football teams, basketball teams, whatever loaded on engines. And. Everybody needs to know this. It's an interdepartmental policy that the public doesn't know. But we have an engine in the station that does not participate in the parade. Everything is out of service when they are in the parades. And we have one engine in the station to respond at all times in regard to any callouts we might have. So it's not like the days of when I was younger on the fire department and you had to have twenty-five kids dismount and parents get off. You know, I wasn't comfortable with that years ago. That's not a policy that's been instituted recently. It's probably been fifteen years. That you'll notice when we have a parade or we have an activity in town that involves the fire department, we always have one engine sitting in the station. So we did, I did fear that also, you know, you know, years ago, we did address that.
I just hate to put a stop to it when we only have two or three parades a year. I mean, is this like a two, when we have two of them a year, three?
Probably, well, and, and something else that we have that we take great part in is Fire Prevention Week. It's a, it's a national recognition. And we visit every school in our fire service district with fire equipment. So that, that's something that I would like to see considered.
And that's not ceremony.
Right, it's just we, we take an engine, we take two or three firemen to a school, we park the piece of equipment and. We hand out material, we show the kids the equipment. They're not mounting.
And that's not, that's not.
It's not a roll.
That's not the issue here. But I'm, like I say, I have no problem if council wants to override that. There have been fatalities in the United States, thankfully not in Oak Hill with parades and fire trucks. That is a fact.
Mayor, Mr. Hannabass mentioned ceremony. Of course, Mr. Oxley just complimented what occurred at, uh. Trooper Siner's funeral, which was a cooperation between Oak Hill Fire Department and.
Fayetteville Fire Department.
Fayetteville Fire Department. It's my, also my understanding that if a department is committed, that you have a backup plan with another department.
That's correct, yes.
The other question I'd have, uh, Mr. Hannabass, and, and again, I respect your decision and the intent of your decision to protect the city. Is this incident covered by insurance?
Yes, it would be.
So it would be covered by insurance?
Yeah, but you know, insurance doesn't pay for lives.
I understand. But at any time that fire engine would go out down there or department would go out, they potentially could. Wreck, hurt somebody. We saw that happen up one of the hollows down in Canal County. So. Uh, just because you have one accident, doesn't mean you couldn't run into the same situation on a normal call. That someone life may be taken or something. That's correct.
That's correct.
That's a fair assessment. And I think the, you know, I'll back up here and maybe repeat myself. It's sad that our local high school is considering contacting Mount Hope, Fayetteville, and other departments participating in homecoming parade. So, you know, again, I would say that one accident, you know, we're gonna, if the police bump into somebody, are we gonna take them out of the parade? If the ambulances bump into somebody, we're gonna ask them not to participate? Uh, obviously, uh, you know, I, I firmly believe. That it should be in the domain of the fire department to make the decision with their hierarchy and their rules, which they understand better than any of us do. That should be in place to govern things, that that decision ought to rest and that's not to undermine.
I take, I take accept.
Well.
You can, you can override my decision as a member or not a member, but as council, but not the management.
Well, I, I, I wasn't saying the management. I was saying to make the decision as to whether they were participating in the parade or not. That it ought to come from them. That would, that's just my two cent opinion. And I. Would like to put in a motion. That the fire department be permitted to participate in the homecoming parade this weekend. And the decision about future parades would be made by the, by the, I can even say in cooperation with you, Mr. Hannabass, if you like that. But be made through the, the governance or administration of the fire department, the chief, the assistant chief and his officers. That would be my motion. I hope I get a second.
Before your motion moves forward, Mr. Perry, I'll, I'll make this statement. I'll rescind that. Order that fire trucks are not to be. Used for ceremonial purposes. I'll rescind that. I want it understood, and I'm gonna state it now, that accidents during ceremonial functions of the fire department with their equipment involved. Is not the responsibility of the city manager. But the responsibility of the city, the city council. I'll rescind that order effective immediately. And, and the reason I say that, it's not on the agenda and I don't, I don't think of. A motion is proper, but, but I understand the sentiment of council and I will rescind that immediately.
I think that's, uh, very acceptable, Bill. And I respect it. And again, I respect your decision. I respect your intent based on what you made that decision. And, uh, I appreciate your being willing to rescind it. Sort of a motion.
Anything else for the fire chief?
Appreciate you, chief.
Thank you, chief. Yes, sir, appreciate the fire department.
Thank you.
It's Mr. Kirk here. He's not hitting.
No, Mr. Kirk can't attend the session, sir.
All right, is anyone gonna speak on his behalf or we just move on from that? We'll move on, all right? But now go to council comments. The council at large, Mr. Oxley, if you have anything.
Just one thing, mayor. Uh, the Veterans Memorial Committee met August the twenty-sixth. Prepared a draft set of minutes, uh, sent them out to the membership. I've got three responses, uh, of some suggestions, including, uh. Next meeting, let's go visit some potential other sites just in case. And we did, we did touch on that. I didn't put it in the minutes because we didn't name them. We just suggested looking at them. Also, I had an email address incorrect from Mark Hurt. I have provided a draft copy to, uh, Councillor Perry. Because we asked, we suggested he continue his liaison with the Jones family. So when it's, when the minutes are approved, provide him a final copy and he can convey that to the judge. That's all I have, mayor.
I read your minutes. They, they're well done.
I'm learning.
Yeah, they look good. Yeah, look good. Oh, Domete taught you everything, okay. All right, any, uh, any comments from Ward, um, two there? Mr. Smallwood, Mr. Jackson, Mr. Hazlitt?
I, I just have a question for Domete. I received a call from Piquita Sarver at the Minden Community Center. Um, she was wondering, I know we'd put a line item in the budget for that center. Um, when would they disperse?
I normally need a request from the group because I don't know who to make the check to or where, where the mail is or. So if they could just, just write a letter, send me an email even.
Okay.
That just, um, tells me where to send it and who to make the check to.
Okay, I'll let her know, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, I have one thing. I just wanted to, um, thank Tyler. I can't remember Tyler, but last week, before last, about the. GSI system here, uh, and some of the things it does and he, um, it's a really, I mean, just work we've done has been really, really good. This system tells you a lot and it answers a lot of questions that. Can probably, it would save us some time probably in council comments of the questions that we asked if we. Um, if we had access, well, we all have access to it, but just to take twenty to thirty minutes to get him to look at, show you how to work the system. Um, there was also an app on your phone that we can get, that he can put on your phone that can, uh. Uh, just about tell you where everything's going on. Um, and so. I just want to thank Tyler and Bill, uh, for spending some time with me and, uh, really, I was a little skeptical at first, but. Uh, because there's so much information on there. When I look at your screen or his screen, but when ours, we can tailor ours to where. You can see what you want to see and you can be informed of what you want to know. So I think it's good. I just wanted to thank you guys. Thank you guys for that.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Just a couple of things here, uh, our playgrounds. Do they meet ADA standards?
ADA standards?
Yeah.
I've, uh, one hundred percent of our playgrounds, probably not, Mr. Smallwood, but some. Yes, sir.
Because I, I, I don't, when I was at Harlem Heights there, uh, you know, when I was at the New River, we had to give a swing for the wheelchairs and a ramp.
Right.
Told we get those.
Okay, yeah, and we have, we have looked into those actually, Mr. Smallwood, um, and, and we have the, um. The one swing at the, at Harlem Heights is called the Expression Swing. It's very popular, very popular item, but, um, and, and. A year or two, we looked into the, uh. The swing for to accommodate wheelchairs and, uh. That I, I can't, I can't recall right now. We obviously chose not to get one for some reason, but, but we have actively looked at it before. I, I'd like to see one, frankly. I think it's a good time. So, so we can look at that and, and as a matter of fact, I've got a little bit of a report about another playground, it's not Harlem Heights, but another playground that we talked about extensively. So maybe that'd be a good opportunity for that.
Uh, the, uh, the Oak Leaf banner there at Bridge, we can take that down now, right? Or is that part of the Oak Leaf committee?
The, oh, please, no, we actually take those down. It's just going up.
Yeah, uh, at the Bridge here.
Okay, we'll get that. We'll get that down. Okay.
In the, uh, I haven't seen anything on the paving schedule.
It's, uh, it's been awarded. They'll, they'll be paving very soon and I'm, I'm sorry, I can't tell you the exact day, but, uh. And I honest to gosh, I meant to check on, I thought about it over the weekend. I meant to check on it today, but I'm not sure the exact day, but it's gonna be very, very soon.
And I would like to give kudos to the Oak Leaf Committee, their function down here. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir.
Well, just leaves Mr. Perry and Ward one. Yeah, I see Miss Janey up there. See, I have forgotten.
Thank you, mayor. Again, if it hadn't been a suggestion of Mr. Oxley, I'd have had fourteen items tonight. But having talked with, uh, Mr. Hannabass, and as I said, he jumbled ten of them right away and addressed every one of them. So in terms of my items, the evaluation instrument was to be developed. It's my understanding, mayor, and I could be corrected, and minutes may show this, that you were the individual to have appointed a committee.
Did I appoint one?
Yeah, that you were to have. And that they would work on the process of development evaluations for the chief, for the city manager and for Domete.
I don't recall that, but I can do it.
Uh, I'd like to request that we proceed with that.
How many people were, were to be appointed? Do you remember?
Five. Not, that's including the three city officials. So be two additional and yourself. That's what I would suggest. You know, if you get more than three or four or five, you end up with a camel.
All right. We can do that.
The other item I have on here, again, I compliment the city manager on the organizational chart that was provided to us. I would just ask that if possible, and I think this is public information as well, that these positions have salaries with them as well. All right, Bill? Thank you. Next thing is the economic coordinator. I would hope that when you give your report, that you will identify those persons who have applied and we will proceed with interviews. And lastly, I think the city needs to be proud again for an individual who worked for the city, Mr. Whitmore, who was recognized as, Mr. Hannabass helped me out.
Oh, the plant operator, wastewater treat plant operator of the year for the state of West Virginia.
And this is the second the city's had. So I would ask that we, the mayor proceed with the resolution and that we invite Mr. Whitmore to the next council meeting so that we may compliment him and take a picture with him. That's all I have, Mayor.
That will be done for Mr. Whitmore. He, he very much deserves it. So that brings me down to, oh, Ms. Janey, do you have anything to add that you want to speak about from wherever you are?
Hey, Mayor, I'm at home. Appreciate that. I just want to compliment all those that volunteered and participated in the Oakleaf Festival. I know it's a big undertaking and with all the stuff that, that faces us right now. But I do want to say thank you for, to all those that put their time in and the efforts that they made. So I appreciate it.
Are you feeling better?
I, I'm working on it. I got, got ways to go, but I'm working on it.
You're not running yet?
No, sir.
Mayor, all comments. I just want to make note, Mr. Hannabass, that behind the building on Virginia Street, I think it's Blackburn's Pond Shop, right behind it, which borders up along Central Avenue.
Yes, sir.
There's just loads of trash, junk piled up back there in the high grass. And I think people coming down Central, I'm sure they have to look at it all the time going up Central. So about I point out to, out there to you, just, just by anything you can think of back there. And I too compliment the Oakleaf Festival Committee. Sorry for those who were active in the Oakleaf who contracted COVID. I think they're all doing much better now. But I thought, I thought it was very well done. I think I threw out at least two tons of candy from these. This candy's cost me a lot of money every parade. I tell you, $110 on this last one, these kids out. But they're all out there in droves and expect you to throw them something out there. So.
And you got it.
Mr. Ox. But it was fun. I appreciate the opportunity to be in, in the parade. I think Mr. Hazlitt was ahead of us in the parade in his truck and his little boys. I, I think, I think the parade went well. I think the event went well to the last day when Bill said they all had to close down everything on Friday Sunday because of the COVID outbreak. Now I just have a minute from the minutes. For those people who may not have, may not know what this is about, every, every council meeting, I pull something out of the minutes in Oak Hill's history of Oak Hill past and read about usually an interesting little tidbit about how the city operated 50 years ago, 100 years ago. The city's been, has been operating for 118 years. So I go back and try to pull out some of the more interesting little tidbits and share them with council and the public each meeting. This one I think is quite interesting. It's August the 6th of 1940. And three men, C.R. Hill, H.E. Wilson and H.E. Berry own, own some real estate consisting of what is called the fairgrounds. Oak Hill used to be the site of the, of the Fayette County Fair for many years. It's down there at the Little League Football, I mean, Baseball. And the, no, yeah, I think even the Scout Cabin was part of that fairgrounds. And all, and all that property there by the, by the armory, all that was part of the, what's called the Fayette County Fairgrounds, which operated for at least 40, 50 years as the state, as the county fair headquarters. Well, in 1940, several women's groups apparently came to the city council wanting a park to be built of, for the children of, of Oak Hill. And the Mr. Hill, Mr. Wilson and Mr. Berry owned a, a large chunk of the fairgrounds tract. And they, which came to around nine and a half acres that they were willing to, to, to deal with the city over. And they excluded the mineral rights. And they said the track would be suitable for a public park, amusement and recreation, which the city of Oak Hill desires to lease and to improve its use and operate the same for the benefit and welfare of the public. And more especially, their citizens of the city of Oak Hill. The owners agreed to lease to the city for $1,500 a year for a period of 10 years, what is now the City Park and, and some other property down there. They executed this on the 22nd of July, 1940. To point out to you that, that one of the owners of the property was the mayor, C.R. Hill. He was one of those who was going to lease this property to the city. To make things even more interesting, the city council voted to make the mayor and the recorder the ones to execute the lease. So there were no, I guess there were no ethics rules in those days that the, that the mayor would lease the property to the city and be the one to execute the lease with him and the city. It was, it was, it was a nice little setup back in 1940. And the council also noted that they didn't want to pay for this whole thing either. So they approached the Works Progress Administration, which is both part of Franklin Roosevelt's New Deal Program, the WPA, and asked the city engineer, H.E. Wilson, to make an estimate of costs and contact the WPA to see if they'll pay for it. So I don't know if the WPA, I haven't gone that far yet, said the WPA paid for it or not. And the city engineer, Mr. H.E. Wilson, I believe you know him, don't you?
I do.
Like your grandfather. So the city engineer, Mr. Wilson, was going to be in charge of contacting the Works Progress Administration, see if they'll pay for it. So I don't know when the city actually bought it, but they leased it, looks like to 1950 at a cost of 1,500 a year payable to the mayor, and it's been a member of city council. That was, it was a smooth, it was a smooth move. I didn't say that back in 1940. It was slick. The day with, I love the part during Mr. Oxley where the mayor would be the one to execute the lease to pay him. To pay him. So there's my 1940 minute from the minutes. Which now moves us into unfinished.
Mr.?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
I, I failed to, there's a couple, there's a handful of folks on there attending my Zoom.
Yes.
That they have a public comment. They weren't here to sign in, obviously. So
Sorry.
I'll, I'll take them in order and ask them to unmute as I do this. Mr. Willis, do you have any public comments, or?
I just want to applaud everybody with Oakleaf. Like I said, they did a good job and everything. I know they got a lot of fire on Facebook, but you know, but other than that, I mean, all the people that put time in with Oakleaf and everything, I think it was going pretty smooth. Other than that, right now, I don't have anything. Thank you.
Thank, oh, I'm sorry. Thank you, sir. Okay, and Mr. Hurt is here for an item on the agenda, the first item on the agenda, but I'll, I'll ask you anyway if you have a public comment on another subject. You, you'll have to unmute.
Can you hear me?
I can. Yes, sir.
I'd like to thank the city for helping with the Oakleaf. Day, day and them helped me with the water back there for my inflations. I like to thank, I know they worked hard. I like to thank the city of Oak Hill for putting on a good Oakleaf.
Thank you, sir. And we have Walters Six Fire. Oh, okay. Okay. All right. Thank you. And I see Missy Wilshire. Missy, do you have any comment?
Yes, Bill. I just wanted to say thank you for all of the kind words that I've received over the last few weeks since I had to give up my seat on council. Just, I wanted to send in a thank you note, but just didn't get a chance. But just appreciate everything you all do for the city and keep up the good work.
Thank you, and we miss you. And Mr. and Mrs. Lines, are, are you present?
That's Brooke. She's here.
Brooke.
We, we are present.
Okay, do you have any public comment?
Well, we weren't sure about the structural ongoings for the property that is next to us at 1016 Summer Lee. So we were kind of inquiring about that and the demolition process.
Okay, it's on the agenda and we'll, we'll cover that, Brooke.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And I believe that is it, Mayor.
All right. Before we go into unfinished business, I think it would be proper to just take a moment of silence and reflection on the death of Jeff Atha, who served 20 plus years on the city council, who just died a week or so ago. I think probably most, just about everyone probably knew him and knew about his work for the city over the many, many years. And so if we will do that, I think that's a fitting thing to do. Okay, thank you. Which moves us into unfinished business. Number one, the appointment to fill a vacancy on the council from Ward one.
Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to request that we go into executive sessions provided in Washington Code 69A or B2A personnel exceptions and/or 69A4 matters involving attorney client privilege per Peters versus County Commission, 205 West East 31, 1999. And I'm making this motion for this reason. It's my understanding that there were certain colleagues of mine who had the privilege to discuss with one of our applicants and ask questions. So I'd like to ask, and I think.
Hello? No.
Pardon? So.
I'm sorry. Mr. Hurt, can you hear me now?
I can hear one now, but I couldn't hear nobody for the last three minutes.
Okay, I'm sorry. The question from the mayor. There, there's been a motion to enter into executive session. One at a time with the three candidates who have expressed interest, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mayor, but the question was put to Chris Hodges and Mr. Ross, and they said that they would rather have the meeting in public instead of executive session. And the question is to you, would you rather go into executive session or would you rather have the session public? Is that a pair?
Yes, sir.
Pair summary? Okay.
It, it doesn't matter to me. I'm, whatever the majority wants.
All right. Okay.
All right, so. What's that do now to the executive session if they all want to talk publicly?
Interview publicly.
It'll be, it'll be public and not a, an executive session, is my understanding of that.
Right.
You posed, you posed asking questions to them individually from.
Yes, yes.
So we got a motion on the floor, though. What are we going to do with that?
Get to vote.
Fine, fine. Is there, we've heard a motion to go into executive session before we heard this. Is there a, we had a second, any discussion? Have we discussed it to death? All right. All those in favor of six, five, saying aye?
Aye.
Does pose know?
No. I don't know what we're, I thought we.
We have a motion on the floor to go into executive session.
Right.
In the meantime, for purpose of interview, in the meantime, Mr. Oxley raised the issue as to, is their choice, is whether they want to executive session or open.
Okay, so they all want open?
Yes.
Oh, okay. So what was that final vote then?
Who voted no?
It was a yes.
Yes for David, yes for Charles.
And no from everyone else.
No, I guess they don't want it. No.
Okay. Okay.
So we need another motion to do it in open session, public session.
No.
I think that's it now.
All right. All right, Mr. Perry, since you brought this up, how do you want to proceed with the questioning?
We're going to do it alphabetically.
I'll start with you.
Hi.
I'll start with you.
No, no, I'm in.
All first.
What order are we going to?
Uh.
I think Ms. Hodges is the first applicant.
Yes, start with her, then I think Mr. Ross, then Mr. Hurt.
I would just propose that they approach the mic and that if you want to do it individually or do it seesaw.
Like a debate forum or?
Pardon? Not a debate, no. Again, I'm not, the, the question is not time for debate, it's interview. Interview questions. So that's up to you, Mayor.
All right, Mr. Perry, do you have questions for?
Yes, yes.
Ms. Hodges? All right, go ahead.
Ms. Hodges, you've been at every meeting since January, and you've observed and heard what the council's done. Do you feel, feel that these items we've covered have been progressive in nature in terms of, for the city?
Um, I think most of them have been progressive. I mean, obviously seeing chickens on the agenda multiple times, I don't feel like it's very progressive.
And we've not taken it up. Of course, it depends on whether you live next to chickens or not, whether it's progressive. But anyway, so the other question, you have managed or oversaw destination downtown Oak Hill for how long?
Two, two years I have been the executive director, and we've been an organization for four years.
What is the membership of that organization?
What do you mean?
What's the membership? How many people participate?
Um.
You meet monthly, correct?
We do meet monthly. We do meet monthly. Um, I'm not sure how many. Yeah.
In terms of the accomplishments of Destination Oak Hill, what do you feel has been accomplished?
This year or since we've formed?
Since you formed.
Um, we've had a great many accomplishments. I mean, we raised the money and do the movies at the amphitheater. Um, we've completed several murals throughout the city. Um, beautification projects throughout the city. Actually, um, working on our website, I have a list of all of our accomplishments if you'd like to see them.
No, I ask you. I'll just, I'll take your verbal response.
Multiple litter sweeps. Um, the, we took over the rail trail expo, so.
Okay. And, uh, l- let me say this. I think the candidates we have are all very capable worthwhile candidates. So, uh, you know, I hope you're not misinterpreting my questions, the intent of the question. Uh, the other question I have is we have authorized or questions, and I've got numerous questions here. We have authorized additional funds for playground for the minority area. What is your position or opinion on that?
I think a playground for Menden would be wonderful. I don't see a reason, I mean, aside from obviously the EPA issues that I think Bill had mentioned at a previous meeting. If it's safe for the kids to have a playground, why not have a playground?
You indicated in my earlier question that you felt that there were some positive things that occurred. Would you identify some of those, please, that you feel have been accomplishments of this council?
Um, I can't really think of them right off the top of my head, so.
In looking to the future, uh, what do you, what would you like to see accomplished as part of this council? What initiatives or, or platform or, uh, advances or what would you?
I'd like to see us develop Needles Eye. I'd like to see us get more signage. I'd like to see us do what we can to help promote our businesses and increase tourism for our city. Increase our street, our sidewalks, improve our sidewalks. Um, since that last paving job, we've had some serious, uh, where it wasn't pitched properly. I'd like to see us have that addressed. Um, those are the primary things that stick out in my head at the moment.
Uh, relevant to, to, uh, future, what would be your position on additional annexations by the city?
I'd
You know, last meeting, some people kinda scoffed when we talked about P Ridge and, uh, other, other potential areas for.
I think you have to look at those as a case by case basis. I can't just sit here and tell you, I think this is a good idea, that one, without looking at each property and
Generally, you would support annexation?
Again, I think you have to look at that and hear how the people who live there feel about it before you can make a decision. You can't just say you support something as a blanket policy without talking to those who are involved by it.
The, uh, uh, Country Club. There's been some discussion by this council about purchase the Country Club, which is outside the city. Uh, Beckley did it. Uh, what would be your feelings or attitude or position on that?
Uh, I think we'd have to have more discussion about that. Like, what would the perfect, purpose of us purchasing that be?
Would you support annexation of that property?
Again, what would the purpose be? You have to have a plan as to why you would make a purchase. You can't just support something without knowing all the facts in front of you.
What's your position on evaluations of the employees?
Um, I have been working since I was fifteen years old. I've never worked anywhere where I didn't have evaluation.
Thank you. The water tank's being considered, uh, as a, as a sign of the city, which may be a vote, or we may have to take a position on. Uh, and you've seen, I guess, the logo that was presented.
Hmm.
Which seems to fit into your beautification ideas and promotion of Oak Hill.
Yes.
Economic Development Coordinator, we've talked about hiring. Are you in agreement with that?
Um, I mean, I am in agreement with it without really seeing the scope of what we expect that person to do, I guess. I think it's a good thing for the city, moving us forward in the right direction, yes.
Okay. The one percent sales tax.
That's something I think you have to have a discussion on. Before you, are you asking me if I support it?
Yes, yes.
I think it's definitely because it's something that's on our agenda. That's something you have to have a discussion about and hear how all your council members feel before you can say whether you support. Because something being on your agenda, you have to hear how everybody else feels and their perspectives before you can make a decision.
But as an individual council, prospective councilman, you really don't wish to take a position at this point?
Um, no, I don't.
Okay. Thank you. It's all questions I have, Mayor.
All right. I have one, a question for you, um. So I just I think just about all of us here were born here. Came here very young. I know my family and Mr. Hazlitt's family, I know we've been here two hundred years, the Blake family. We, we never did go anywhere, just stayed right here all those years. But you came here to make it your home. You came here. What did you see about Oak Hill that would bring you out of the hills of Virginia to West Virginia and so think, and Oak Hill's your place? Right there?
Right there. This was his home, so that's why it's my home.
And you consider it your home, don't you?
I do, yes, sir. Since two thousand thirteen.
Yeah, people say that, that, uh, I didn't have any choice. I was born here, but you came here, so what, uh, I didn't, I didn't have any choice. I was just here. So but you, but you made it your, your home. All right, I just, uh, wanted to bring that point up that, uh, you brought it, you came here to make it your place. Mr. Oxley.
Ms. Hodges, do you think that the city council has been appreciative of the work that Destination Downtown does, and have we provided you with ample financial support?
Absolutely, yes.
Are there things between the lines of the things that your, your group has accomplished that the city could assist you with that could help you do more?
Oh, sure, you could give me a hundred thousand dollar budget.
Besides the money part, are there ways, are there ways we can help you? Um, and I don't have a thought in mind, I'm just
Yeah, um, oh, I mean, of course, if we, we've been brainstorming and trying to, I mean, there's projects that we want to do that would require a bucket truck and, and things of that nature, so there's other ways to support our, our efforts, absolutely, besides just financially. So absolutely, yes.
And I know recently you had a little bit of controversy about potential thing. But for the most part, doesn't your group work out everything through consensus? I mean, you
We do.
You, I mean, you set a vision, how you're gonna do it, how you're gonna fund it. Then you either put it to a vote or everybody says, yeah, I think that's a great idea.
We do.
And you move forward, is that correct?
Right.
So those are rare bumps in the road when you have this, correct?
I mean, we, correct.
You're a group.
We either all vote, I mean, you either all vote to approve it or you don't, and you move on to the next thing.
We don't always agree on everything here.
Right.
So. I believe that's all I have. Thank you. Your vision. What is?
My vision of Oak Hill would be to see where all of our buildings are restored. All of our businesses are successful. All of our residents are, you know, um, happy and we have wonderful events that happen every year. I mean, I guess to have the pitch, pi- picturesque city for everybody to be a part of, where our football fields are complete and our kids are happy. Ideally, I would love to create a city that my children want to return to when they finish college. That's my goal. That's what I work so hard, that's what Adam and I work so hard to achieve. I want my children to come back here. They keep telling me they won't, no matter what I do, but it's okay, I'm still gonna keep trying.
May I have one last question if I might, if, if my colleagues?
I don't have it.
In terms of, uh, Destination Oak Hill, Downtown Destination, if you are selected for this position tonight, will you, I guess, would you have to, or will you?
I have already, if I'm selected for this position, I would resign and I already have someone that has agreed to step in my place.
So do the, do, do, does the group select that person or is appointed?
So we have, um, we have a, um, vote in October is when we have our elections. So if this person would fill my seat until we are, have our elections in October, yes.
I understand. Thank you. Thank you.
Would you still be working with them, though, as far as?
Oh, absolutely, yeah. Um, yeah, no.
Okay. Just in title.
That's my hometown, yeah.
Thank you, Ms. Hodges.
Mr. Ross, are you next, I think? Oh, uh, Diane, do you have any questions?
No, sir.
Okay.
Evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name's James Ross. I've lived here since nineteen seventy-one. So. Be happy to try to entertain any questions that you may have for me.
We'll start over here with Mr. Hazlitt this time, anything going over here in Ward Two.
Just do ask you to speak up because
All right.
Can't hear real well.
Okay, Mr. Ross.
Yes.
I know the, the playground at Menden is a big pardon me. Thing. The playground at Menden is a big thing for me. How do you, how do you feel about the playgrounds and improve, improving recreation for the kids in the city?
Well, some people here do know my background. I was a fiscal education instructor for thirty-three and a half years and, uh, I, I'm an advocate of recreation. Menden is part of what, uh, Oak Hill. The children down there need and deserve a safe place to play for recreation. So I am definitely for that. There's other recreation things I'm also for. I'd love to see baseball season extended too, but that personally.
I'll ask a safe question. Your vision of Oak Hill? Your vision, what, what do you, you know, your vision of Oak Hill City?
Yeah. I I'm a deep believer in making Oak Hill accessible to business. I, I think we need business, we need people working. And I think if we do get business in here, more businesses, more people working, some of the problems that we might have will, you know, they'll take care of themselves. You know, I think some of the problems that we have may be because some people you know, are without jobs. And I think any community should want to be accessible to business. I know on the Planning and Zoning Board, which I'm a member of, who voted for the old bank to be a, a, a place where they could make medical marijuana. You know, we were told that the possibility of having thirty-three jobs or more. So I, 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 I do think we need to be progressive, and I think Oak Hill has been progressive in that area, and I applaud that.
Mr. Ross, I haven't known you all fifty years that you've been here. But I've known you the better part of it.
Yes, sir.
I have nothing but great respect for you as a, as a community member and what you've done. And, uh, I know your vision for the town. Because you have a young daughter. Maybe you'd like to her to return here sometime now.
I would love for her to return to Oak Hill sometime. Fairfax, Virginia is four and a half hours away.
Yeah, and that's an expensive part of Virginia too, so I have no questions for it.
Land of Grosh, it's expensive. All I'll say is, Coach, my son had you in class and he really liked you. So I have, I have no, I've had a few people, not saying that I'm getting old, but I've had a few people here.
Did you have me in class?
I think I did. If I remember correctly, you, you tried to get out of running a lot. But I too have chosen to live in Oak Hill. I've lived here since nineteen seventy-one. My father retired from the military and he wanted to come back home. Of course, his home was called Run. Now, the fancy name for it now is Kennard. But on his birth certificate, it says Cole Run. But he wanted to come back home and, uh, I've lived all over the world. I've lived in many states. And I fell in love with Oak Hill.
Mr. Perry?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Ross, number one, uh, you've aware of what the council's done over the years, in the past few years, and being on the planning commission, I'm sure some of that has come down to you.
Yeah.
Do you feel this council has been progressive in the interest of citizens of Oak Hill?
I'm sorry.
Do you feel this council has been progressive in the interest of the citizens of Oak Hill? In the last few months?
Yes, I, I do. I, I believe we've been progressive and I I'd say I know most of all of you pretty well. And I know, and I've talked with you, and like I say, Billy Hannah Bass, Mr. Hannah Bass, I'm sorry, was the first person I ever met when I come to Oak Hill. And I know you know, your love for this area and, and that you want the best for it. So yes, I think we've been progressive and I think I applaud you for it.
Second question, you remember the Oak Hill Fire Department for how long?
Just about fifteen years.
In that tenure with the Oak Hill Fire Department, what do you feel you contributed to the fire department? Uh, what contributions did you contribute and what, uh, do you feel was accomplished?
Well, first off, I'd like to say out of anything I've ever been a member of in my life, I'm most proud of the fifteen years that I spent on the Oak Hill Fire Department. I hope that I may have added something to it, uh, maybe a, a small modicum of, of leadership. But whatever I may have added to Oak Hill Fire Department, they've twofold gave back to me confidence, leadership under Chief Tim Richardson and Assistant Chief Robert Begley. It was the most rewarding work I've ever done. I've often said, if you want to meet the best man in Oak Hill, the fire department on Tuesday night.
In terms of this position, uh, how do you feel that serving on the, uh, Planning and Zoning Board has given you insight? Or how do you feel it would assist you if you were appointed to this position?
I think usually things come to us before they come to you on a planning and zoning board. So we've been able to keep an eye to see where the city's going. And like I said, that's why I think we've been progressive, because I think the Planning and Zoning Board is also progressive. We also want to make business accessible. And, um, it seems like the things that we have brought to the, uh, council, a lot of them have been approved as far as being accessible for business. So I, I think that's been a positive. And I, I always know that we feel like we work together more than we're not a disjointed planning and zoning board from the council. I think we work together and I think we have a common goal for the betterment of Oak Hill.
How long have you served on the Planning and Zoning Commission?
Oh goodness, I have served at, at first I was on the, uh, zoning board, and then I got moved over to the Planning and Zoning Commission. I would have to say a good fifteen years now or so, it's in that area. Positive.
So you have been engaged with the city over that fifteen years? Were you ever part of the youth program that was in the summer that, that the city used to sponsor?
Were you ever part of the youth program that was in the summer that, that the city used to sponsor? The youth program, uh, I know Carol Kellner was and. No, I think Mr. Wright's relatively sponsored that program or was responsible for. I wasn't. That I've coached little league and senior league for a couple of years. I've coached teams. Oak Hill golf team for a couple of years. I've helped with football and helped coach the baseball team in Fayetteville. Mr. Hazlitt's already asked you and I think you gave an affirmative answer that you supported playground for, for Minden. Yes, I do. In terms of, uh, in terms of annexation, what would be your position on annexation? Well. I know a lot of cities without, or some towns, I'll say, without mentioning names or just trying to gobble up everything without taking people into consideration. Oak Hill doesn't seem to have done that uh, to the extent of some other places. I think if it's for the benefit of where we're trying to annex and the people there in the city, then yeah, I, I'm all for it. Um, I know you, you asked about, uh, Old White Oak Country Club. Yeah, I played a lot of golf there. Too much golf there, but I, I, I hate to see it just sit there and do nothing when they have a nice facility. I'm sure some things could be done with the, uh, actual country club building and everything there. I'm sure the city could come up with a good plan for that. Yeah. So. Like I said, I, I think, like I say, you do have to take things individual. I think Ms. Hodges alluded to that. But if, if, if it's gonna help the people that live in that area in the city, we have a plan. Yeah, I'm, 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 I'm all for it then. I know the Oak Hill Fire Department doesn't just sort of serve Oak Hill. I mean, we've been to calls in Thurman. I remember Timmy and I sat out in a cold night one time in Thurman. So yeah, incorporate some of the areas in that need it, could use the help. In terms of valuations of, of, of the four key positions in the city, uh, do you favor evaluation? Yeah, and, and I'll tell you why, but the people that I'm have, that I know that you're talking about in these positions are, I think an evaluation would show people just how good a job they are doing. Okay. I had to be evaluated in my job for, you know, that you did it for thirty-three and a half years. You didn't always exceed standards, did you? Always. No, not always. In terms of water tank, the water tank has been talked about and discussed in terms of, uh, uh, putting a logo on it. Are you tentatively in support of or think it's a good idea? I live on Highland Avenue. It would be nice to have something there, the city logo. I know I travel other places a lot, especially go to see my wife. I mean, my, not my wife, but my daughter in Fairfax, Virginia and, uh, you'll see water tanks there with a peach, painted a peach or an apple or something. And yeah, I know my wife always makes a comment. It is nice. It would be nice to drive up Highland Avenue and see something like that. So I would be for that. Mayor, I have one other question that didn't ask, uh, Ms. Hodges this question. So if she'd like to respond, I'd like to hear her response to if she'd rather not, I'd accept that. Trying to ask both parties the same question. In the, the council has discussed, uh, possibly a new, uh, city building or a new center. What, and, and we've looked and we are awaiting appraisals and so forth. What would be your position on the construction of a new city hall? Would you be in favor of? Would you oppose? What factors you feel should be considered? I definitely wouldn't be opposed to it. Um, I remember when the fire department was in here, uh, and I was in favor of getting a new department. Uh, I'd be in favor of, uh, I know when the bank first came up, I thought it'd be a great place for this, you know, city, you know? Uh, I thought that would have been nice, but no, I wouldn't be opposed to it at all. We've also discovered, discussed a new facility too. Pardon me? We've also discussed a new facility. So you would favor some facility somewhere? Yes. Specifically, you're committing to that? Yeah, I, I, I think I would be for that. Mayor, Ms. Hodges, would you like to respond to that or you prefer not to? Yes, yes. Okay, thank you. Mayor, that's all the questions I have. Thank you.
Ms. Janey, do you have anything? Diane?
No, sir. I, I have no questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, mister, thank you, Mr. Ross. Mr. Hurt?
Yes, Mayor.
All right, um, let's, we'll start over here with Mr. Oxley, see if he's got anything he wants to ask you.
All right, I just want, um, let everyone know I would be in person, but I'm in quarantine till this Thursday is the reason I'm not in person.
Yeah, I know you've had the COVID.
Yes, Mayor.
Yeah.
Glad you're not in person.
Mr. Oxley, do you have anything for Mr. Hurt?
Mr. Hurt, uh, I've got to know you in the last several years, uh, possibly through your running for office and also most recently through this, uh, Veterans Memorial Committee. Seems like you have a lot of things going on for you and, uh, what? What is your primary reason for wanting to be selected to fill the vacancy on council?
I want to be a part of bringing Oak Hill businesses back, bringing the community together. I want to be a part of that as a local business person myself. Me and my wife personally in our own businesses invested over twenty-five thousand dollars in our business because we believe in Oak Hill and offering this entertainment for families to rent from us. I just want to be a part to bring greatness back to Oak Hill. I like to see, um, I like to see us do a campaign on local businesses, a public announcement, let people know that Oak Hill is open for business, mention our businesses. I, um, fortunately, the last six years of work with Tom and Sherry Signer at the TV and radio station. And one thing I'm proud of was I helped come up with the Shop Local, Support Local campaign that we have ran in Oak Hill, Anstead, Rainell, Mount Hope and different areas. And it's something that we came up very affordable, that they pay a low premium each month and we advertise their business, let people know to shop local, support our local businesses. So that's the reason I'm running or put my name in for city council. I want to be a part of, uh, helping Oak Hill succeed.
As a customer and as a business owner, you know that the city of Oak Hill is entertaining a one percent sales tax. Would you support such a move?
I think the one percent sales tax would be, the businesses would be adequate to it and acceptable to it as if we did a, um, if they showed that we are sincerely promoting our business, promoting the city. And it comes back to public announcements. We did some public announcements on, uh, different radio stations, TV stations, let people know Oak Hill is open for business. I don't see, uh, businesses having a problem with the one percent.
That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Hurt.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Mr. Uh, what? None for you, Mr. Jackson? Mr. Smallwood?
Mr. Hurt, what is your vision that you have for Oak Hill?
My vision is I want to see, uh, growth and opportunity in Oak Hill. As a family man with six children and our, uh, half of them in our school system, I like to see, um, I, I'm in favor of playgrounds. Um, I like the Minden area. I've been in there and marched with Minden. I like to see a playground in Minden. I like, uh, anything that's opportunity for our kids to keep them, uh, safe and out of trouble. That's what I'm all about is, uh, our kids are our future. I volunteer for the last eight years at the Oak Hill, uh, rec league. I'm the secretary on the, uh, on the board there at the, uh, youth soccer. I recently just, uh, got hired as Oak Hill Assistant Soccer Voice Soccer Coach. I got a lot of investment here in the community. I want to see Oak Hill grow again. I want to see our businesses put, uh, up front in, uh, marketing. I want to see, um, opportunity. I want to see our, um, a good job on these empty buildings of being painted, uh, uh, congratulate, um, Ms. Hodges and, and, um, Destination Downtown for, uh, putting duty on our, uh, dilapidated buildings and, uh, I know, uh, Mr. Hannah Bass, I've been to several meetings and we focus on dilapidating buildings of, uh, taking care of getting them down for not only safety, but for the beauty of our city. And I, I like city, see our city continue to grow in a positive direction.
Mr. Uh, Hazlitt?
Yeah, I have no question.
Mr. Jackson, you have nothing? And Mr. Perry?
Mr. Hurt?
Yes, Mr. Perry.
Uh, I had the same question Mr. Oxley asked in terms of the number of positions you've sought in the county and why you landed on the city council twice now. So I think you responded to that. Uh, the other question I have is what do you think has prepared you should you be selected for this position?
My, um, overall involvement in the community, in, uh, youth soccer, uh, being a local businessman myself since two thousand and twelve. Understand the struggles of local businesses and the importance of local business in, in our town. I've, as a marketing, uh, sales manager for the TV radio station, a lot of our businesses do advertising with me. And, uh, and they do it because they trust me with their marketing to get their business to grow. I'm very proud, once again, that I shop local, support locals, shop Fett County, shop Oak Hill. I'm very proud of that right there. It's something that I came up with the signers and we came to help our local businesses. I think my preparedness in the community for the last twenty-plus years has, uh, prepared me for civic duty and I'd be honored and I was proud of the mayor, uh, Danny Wright uh, appointed me to be on the veterans committee and, uh, Mr. Tom Oxley, uh, nominated me to be the chairman of the veterans committee. They show, uh, faith in me and it's the same, uh, faith that I have in our city and I'd love to be part of the city council. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Hurt, in terms of evaluations of, uh, Ms. the meeting bill and fire chief and the police chief, what is your position on formal evaluations?
I think evaluations, uh, keep, uh, hold accountability. I managed, uh, Kroger's and I had to do evaluations on each department head every day and do a report back to the corporate. And I think evaluations keeps accountability. But I think they all do a great job and I think, you know, evaluation is accountability.
In terms of, uh, the economic development coordinator, do you support the hiring of an economic development coordinator?
It's partially my knowledge of it, but I support, I think it'd be good for the city to, uh, to move forward. Yes, sir.
You heard me ask about annexation. What is your position on annexation? Or what would be your position?
I think Mr. Perry alongs your way to, um, look at each aspect, the pros and the cons of annexation. Some people are for it, some people are against it. Uh, I mean, I'd love to see the city do something with the White Oak, uh, Country Club. I like to see it turned into a, uh, recreation, recreation complex. Uh, the city could have, uh, people renting out for dances, for weddings, receptions, stuff they used to do in the past. I think, uh, the city could benefit greatly from that property, um, doing youth soccer, uh, maybe putting in some tennis courts, recreation for the city, beautifying the city. I think is, uh, that would be a great move on the, uh, city of Oak Hill to, uh, to purchase that property.
This council appears to have moved forward in support of a new city hall. Uh, and they've looked at two options. Are you in support of a new city hall?
I think everybody's in support of it. There, there's gotta be a, a reason for a new city hall. So maybe ours is rundown, it's time for a new city hall. Yes, I would be in favor of a new city hall. Yes, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. I have no further questions.
And Ms. Janey, do you have any, any questions of Mr. Hurt?
No, sir, Mayor. Thank you.
Mr. Hurt, I have just one last question for you. I know that you are the marketing manager for the, uh, local TV and radio here, uh, which I believe are part of Tommy Signer's, uh, enterprises here. And so I know that you work with businesses on a regular basis. How can you take, how can you take that business interaction that you have on a daily basis and use that, uh, for service in city government?
As a, um, when I'm out talking to my businesses, they, uh, they talk to me and, uh, give me, uh, some feedback now, you know, what they would like to see at a city. I think it's a great relationship over the last six years that I have built with our local business people. And, uh, we get great, you know, great suggestions, great ideals for our local business people because they live on the front line every day. So I think it's a great relationship that I have with local business people to, uh, help them as a city council member to bring maybe possible issues up that we're not aware of. So I think it's a great, uh, working relationship that I do have with our local business people.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hurt.
Thank you.
We've heard questions and answers from all three candidates who are seeking to fill this vacancy on city council from Ward One and we've heard from from, uh, Krista Hodges, Jim Ross and Mark Hurt. We've all had ample time to ask questions of each one. And I think we've all heard the answers and have posed some of those questions. So we move now down to the filling of that vacancy from, uh, till June thirty, twenty twenty-three, when, uh, the terms of everyone here will end and a new administration will come in July first. So do you think it's necessary that we nominate people or just take these three and vote on them one by one?
Last time when you did me, you just voted on them.
We just go one by four. Yeah.
Pardon?
That's what Councilman Jackson suggested too. I have no problem. That's, we've got three candidates, so probably simply do it.
Yeah, if we had ten or fifteen, we might have to narrow it down a little bit, but we only have three. And I, and I guess what we opened the council, uh, I guess we'll just take, take them one by one and we'll just vote. Or how do you want to do that?
Just start with Mr. Perry. Come around to Ms. Janey.
Whichever one they, the three they want. All right, whichever the three they want. And will the clerk keep note, who's got all three names down there? And, and and all the, and all the votes there. Um, let's start with Ms. Janey, who's up there on the screen.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Janey, of the three candidates for city council to fill the vacancy created by the resignation of Missy Wilshire, for whom do you vote?
Uh, Krista Hodges.
All right, one vote for Krista Hodges. We now will move to Mr. Perry.
Mayor, let me again echo what you said. I think we're very fortunate to have had three qualified applicants. In weighing the questions and the specificity of the answers in having supervised Mr. Ross for some twenty-some years, having heard he was multi-dimensional in terms of the fire department, in terms of, uh, the planning committee, prior to that, the zoning committee. Uh, I, I feel like Mr. Ross is probably a little more diversified and not quite as single dimensional as some of the other applicants. Therefore, I would cast my vote for Mr. Jim Ross.
One vote for Mr. Ross. I just want to echo what Mr. Perry said. I think we have three outstanding candidates. I don't think, I don't think the Oak Hill City Council would be hurt by the election of any of them. No pun there, Mr. Hurt. Uh, but I, I, um, I don't think that, that we would, uh, that this council would suffer with the, with selection of any one of these three. Uh, I, I think we have three good candidates, great, good solid candidates and, uh, I think that, uh, no, no matter who the winner is tonight, uh, Oak Hill will be a winner as well and, and whichever candidate is chosen. We now move to Mr. Oxley. We now move to Mr. Oxley.
I agree with your comments, both of Mr. Perry's and yours, Mayor. I think we're fortunate to have people who are not only qualified, but who want to serve their community. And I've cast my vote for Krista Hodges.
Two votes for Ms. Hodges. We now move to Mr. Smallwood.
I would echo everybody's comment. Uh, I would cast my vote for Mr. Ross.
Mr. Ross. That's two, Mr. Ross, two Krista Hodges. Is that right? We now move to Mr. Jackson.
Like you said, I think these are three really good candidates and something I've thought about for a long time. I'm gonna cast my vote for Krista Hodges.
Krista Hodges. And it comes down to Mr. Hazlitt.
I think I can echo everybody's sentiment, or sentiments that we are very blessed that we have three very good candidates for city council. I would cast my vote for Krista Hodges.
Krista Hodges. Madam Clerk, will you read the results?
Krista Hodges, four votes, Jim Ross, two votes, Mark Hurt, no votes.
So the final tally is Krista Hodges, four, Jim Ross, two, Mr. Hurt, zero. So I declare that the open seat left by the resignation of Missy Wilshire in Ward One will now be filled by Krista Hodges from Ward One. Now, I've talked it over with the city manager and I think I even mentioned it to you, Mr. Perry.
Yes, you did.
That, um, Smallwood, maybe I, I think I talked to you as well, uh, that the person who was chosen now, Krista Hodges, if she would want to be sworn in tonight, we could do so if she wants to wait until, uh, next into October.
Eleventh, is it?
October thirteenth. October eleventh. Yeah, October eleventh. If you want to wait to October eleventh, we can have one of the judges in here to swear you in. Or if you want to be sworn in tonight, we have documents ready for, had ready for all three candidates. And I can swear you in if you want to be, take your seat tonight. It's up to you. You don't want to wait to the judge?
Mayor, I'd suggest we swear her in tonight and we have an official swearing in in October with the choosing of, uh, Mrs. Hodges' judge or person if she so desires. In, this would be, this is official and in a formal.
So you want a ceremonial one on the eleventh?
That's my.
This is, this is the one you actually take your seat tonight.
If you want to take just a five minute break there and, uh,
Ten minute break. They were missing somebody.
And Krista.
Where's Krista Hodges? Break is over. We're now proceed to the swearing in of a new member of city council, Krista Hodges. Um, where is she? Oh, Mr. Oxley, wait, wait, wait a second. He's not back. Just a second.
Together already?
There he is. That sounds kinky, doesn't it? All right.
Can I have him up here with you?
Right hand, left hand, gosh. I don't know. Emily, swear with the right hand or left hand?
Left hand on the.
Right hand up, left hand on the.
I'm Krista Hodges. And solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of the State of West Virginia in favor or discharge the duties of council member according to the best of my ability. So help me God. Congratulations.
Where's Nessie's footstool?
They go up some.
There's a lever there.
Or down, up. It might be as high as it goes.
Not till she gets, yeah. Just till she gets back.
I'm sure I could help you.
I saw that.
I'll put it back, Diane.
All right.
All right, we now move to number two of the unfinished business. Just one second. Does, uh, does she have?
Agenda.
She have an agenda?
I do. I have mine.
What do you want to go to?
I can, uh, Mayor, I, I was gonna ask if, if council doesn't object, I would like to go to, under new business, item number fifteen, planning commission recommendation.
All right, objection. Okay, go ahead. Fifteen Planning Commission Recommendation to approve land classification from R2 medium density residential district to a BR Recreation Business District to allow RV park at four, three, four, two, Lock Yelly Road. Chief, you want to bring, uh, Jake, do you want to come in? Oh, okay, that's right. All right, I know, that's right.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I had the opportunity to speak to him at, prior to the meeting, uh, and ask him what he was about. And I think most of us kind of know what he was about. I asked him if he had a plot plan and he said no. I asked him if he had a budget. He said no. But in terms of what he's about for that piece of property, in terms of what Fett County needs, and also asking would it be a, uh, uh, come here, uh, trailer park? No. It's strictly, it's an RV park, which complies with federal regulations, which designates the number of days. I think it's up to seven days. You can be present and you have to move. And I think with the national park status coming on, uh, it's an excellent idea. The location's excellent. And I think it would be a, a, uh, advantage to the city to move this ahead for him. That's my two cents opinion. And I would move that we approve the recommendation as presented.
Is there a second? Second, Ms. Janey.
Yes.
Second, it's, all right, any discussion? Is, is this the old Custer stand location?
Yes.
And the, and the molten, molten.
How many, how many RVs can this thing hold?
I think he's looking at doing, during the meeting, our zoning and planning meeting, he said it takes up to ten. Is what he, is that what he told you? That's what he told us in that meeting. I think it was ten. I think it was ten. Yeah, Bill, you were there. Yeah, he said ten. And it was going to all, they go have electric sewer, water and everything.
Now, who, who's the, who's the owner?
Josh Purdue. He owns the, uh, trucks, like owns a truck repair.
Oh, okay. He came to city council one night, didn't he? Did he come to talk something about?
I'm not completely sure. He was at the zoning and planning.
Yeah, I think he came to city council one, one night.
Not since I've been.
I don't think so, Mayor.
He didn't?
Not since I've been here.
See, I've been sitting here too long. Okay. All right, there's been a motion and a second and there has been discussion. Anything else? Hearing them, we'll vote the motion. All's in favor, six, five, sing ah. Disposed, no. Motion's agreed to, seven, zero. Now, Mr. Hannah Bass, is there anything else in, in that area there?
Yes, sir. Okay. I, if, if council doesn't object, I would like to go to item number sixteen.
Objection, number sixteen.
And under item sixteen is both one, 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 nine. Min, no, wait a minute.
Yeah. Broadway Avenue.
One thirty-seven Broadway Avenue. And three twelve Main Street. We're calling it three twelve. I understand it's behind there. But, but actually we have two, uh, an individual and a group here for those two items. So we'll go to, uh, item sixteen.
So we're not going to vote on them as a group? It will pull two of them out?
We, we, if, if council chooses to vote on all four of these under that item A, B, C, and D, that's fine. But I, I want to field questions from two groups that are here. And, um, so, uh, I recognize Aaron is here as well, but I, I'll recognize first of all, the, the fairies for any further questions you might have on the, on the property and the time process and all that.
And, and I appreciate you.
And, and I appreciate you making the record straight, it is five hundred Main Street. In reading the ordinance having to do with this structure, I'm assuming that the board has decided that this structure needs to be torn down. And so I think what my clients really want to know is, pursuant to the ordinance, there is a mechanism in the ordinance here where there is an investigation, whether it be an oral complaint or a written complaint, and I think that my clients would just like to know what that investigation pursuant to their property looked like.
Sure, I can, I can answer that. Sometime back, I alluded to it earlier, there was, uh, it was pointed out to me, it wasn't exactly a complaint that there was dilapidated house. We have a, we have a system where the structural inspection board, there's actually five members, three of us are present this evening, the mayor, myself, and the fire chief. Where we grade structures, we have a scoring process, and if there's a, if there's a, a structure that appears to be, uh, dilapidated, we score that structure, it's a priority score. There's many things built into that, I'd be glad to forward you that information, things like if it's framed or if it's brick, if it's, uh, the condition of the roof, the utilities, how visible it is, this, and this structure's not very visible, that's why I've known about it for some time, but it hadn't come up. So anyway, they get a priority score. And these priority scores are looked at during the meeting of the structural inspection board, so that we're not arbitrary, and it, it doesn't matter to us who owns it, or all the politics is out of it. And we look at priority scoring and safety of those structures, and, and I, I think you'll, we, we'll look at it.
Now, is that something that you all do in writing, scoring, the scoring, is that done?
It is, I, I can show you in depth that as well.
Well, I think that, um, one of the questions that my clients had was, how did you all even get onto the property, did you, was there an egress that you were able to get in and out of? Because I think one of their main concerns is being able to get equipment back there to be able to demolish the structure, so
Right.
that was one of the questions that they did have, is, is how did you guys get there?
On the screen in front of you is, the, the green, uh, dot here is where the structure's located. This is Main Street, this is to, to orient you on this map. This is, uh, the, the Methodist Church right here, and a parking lot of Methodist Church right here where Sunbeams is, and the daycare center, and this is right beside there. It's in the woods. And this is what it looks like.
By chance, do we know if any homeless people have been occupied in this?
It.
Are we suspect?
I, I tell you what, honestly, Mr. Perry, when I looked at it, it, uh, it, it looks like there probably could have been, uh, it's a little bit, I, I don't know if many homeless people would want to go in it right now. It's, it's pretty dilapidated, I mean, I, I think it's obvious.
And let me be clear, my client's position is not that this structure doesn't need to be torn down. Certainly, they, they admit absolutely that that's part of what needs to happen with this property. Given the fact that the notice was served on them just recently, and I know that this, this council meeting is for the vote on whether or not to demolish this structure. There's no question it needs to be demolished, however, given the timeframes that the ordinance puts forward for my clients, given the fact that the structure is where you said it is, and where you showed us, very difficult to be able to, to get in and out of that property, so they're gonna have to, um, talk to, um, an excavating business or something like that. They agree that it needs to come down, they would like to be able to hire someone privately, um, to tear it down, because they have a great interest in the structure, as you know, that sits right on Main Street. Um, and so my, my question or, or my request of the council respectfully is that you all put off, and there's a mechanism in the ordinance for this, you put off till the next meeting, a vote on this demolition, so that they can get their ducks in a row, so we're not coming up on any kind of timeframes where you all are gonna be mad at us.
Let me, let me speak to the timeframe, so that everybody understands council and, and you all, Joy, Joy and I talked about it the other day. The, the way this process works, that's, let's say, for instance, this council votes tonight to take up the recommendation of the structural inspection board. What we have to do by law is to serve a notice, uh, not a notice, serve an order. By Fayette County deputy. And, we, we have to. We'll have to do that, and, and that takes, and, and Amy, you know, that takes a little bit of time, we, we mail that off, we have to send in twenty-five dollars for the sheriff to do that, and they have to process that administratively, and you're looking at rapid pace, two weeks, okay? And at that two weeks, once the service has been made, then there is a twenty day period to begin, begin demolition. Now, then, depending on when that twenty days expires, council has to take it up again, so you can go another, you know, one to three or four weeks after that time for council to take it up again, and what they look at then was the fact of whether the property owner began demolition or did not begin. And it's, and it's all the better definition of begin demolition. And at that point, council can by resolution authorize the city to cause the demolition. So, this is not, and, and you can disagree with me, or council can disagree with me, but moving forward this evening on the recommendation, I don't think it's gonna put a pinch in your timeframe, because the resolution doesn't have to be voted on. If, if you're still under a, a time constraint, and I'll give you some pointers on how to tear a house down, or have it torn down. If at the point when those twenty days have expired and it comes back before council, that decision can be delayed. So it's not.
You've got to understand, in the ordinance, um, it certainly lays out a timeframe, but not less than five nor more than twenty days, and so I think that that was one of the things that my clients were a little worried about.
Right.
Because of just being able to get to the property itself, you know, they're gonna have to find a, and a couple of bids, I would say, to be able to, to really get it done, and so just as long as the council is willing to wait for them, you know, my being here should signal to you that they are serious about, about doing this, and that it's gonna get done, so, um, I think that, I think that I understand better what your timeframes are, forgive me, I saw the ordinance and it scared me, because I didn't want my clients to have to come back before you all.
In twenty days.
Right, and, and so, um, I, I will certainly advise them on what to go forward in doing, and then if it's necessary, we will come back now. When we get the notice and that, the twenty days is up, do you want me to get in touch with you about the progress?
That would be great, that would be great, I'll give you, I think you have my contact.
Yes.
Okay. The other thing I, I want to mention that I think is a perfectly viable option, I, I think I would personally do this if, if I was having a structure torn down. This, the city, we're obligated, in fact, later on, I have sealed bids right here for other structures. An option for you is to go ahead and let the city tear it down. And I bid it, I don't think you're gonna get much better price, if any better price, go ahead and let's tear it down. We will send you a bill in essence, if you don't pay the bill, then we lean your property, we will never take, we won't take possession of your property, we will lean the property. So, at that point, you have the option to pay what is gonna be as reasonable prices can be expected.
Now, is that bid out through the city, do you all?
We have.
Different companies that?
We do.
For this, okay.
We do. And, and I, honestly, I wouldn't say it if I didn't believe it, I don't think many people are gonna be able to get a better, much better price than we get, because we do advertise it, I, I would do the same that, that you all would do, I would check with different folks and, and, uh, and, and contractors watch us, because we tear down several structures, so, so I, I think it's a good deal for you, you're more than welcome to go a hundred percent private and, and, you know, hire somebody else, but, but it's not the end of the world to let us tear it down. And it's interest, there's no interest charged on you either.
No interest on the.
I gotta get a question, see, because I can't hear.
Can I get more ideas and here's the side and I'm gonna do it?
Absolutely.
Hey, you guys.
Absolutely.
Or am I tired?
No, but, uh, the consequence of it though there is, 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 is timing proposed, I'm not gonna bid it out until after you have the opportunity to begin the demolition. So there will be one of those timing problems back. I, I'm not gonna start at the opportunity to tear it down either. But then, I'm not gonna get bids until the city council tells me by resolution that that we authorize the city manager to. Okay, by then, I'm, I'm moving forward on my resolution.
Bill, sounds to me like that, that, that even the normal process would allow them the time to extend past October as you requested.
I just have a question, what's the history of that house? Do you know?
What, I'm not sure where Wanda's parents brought that house from, but it was her first home. And it wasn't, it wasn't with our grandfather, it was her family home. I'm not sure when she brought that house there, it's been there since, I can't remember. So.
There was a, a, you know, the story about it, but it is no more.
Ogden City?
Yeah.
I was just saying, the story I heard is that the house was moved because the state had to relocate, if people wanted to relocate it to have to, they moved it there to be early.
Okay.
But it moved in Ogden City.
Ogden City, yeah. Uh huh. Interested in why it was there. I'm just interested in why it was there. Okay. Okay.
Well, what, what I'll do now with these four, and I, I'll, I'll address Erin in a moment back here, she's, uh, owner of another one of these, but I'll go through these four. And, and Erin and I will talk about her structure, and then council can choose to take all four of them and vote on them, or council can choose to vote on, uh, the parish home separately, or however council may choose to do, so, let me go up, um, and this is one, one three seven, this is Miss Erin Runyon in the back. And this is, uh, an overhead satellite view of one three seven Broadway Avenue. There's been an unfortunate, uh, fire in this home, and, uh, so I'll be glad to address any concern you may have, and I, I now, you know a little bit about the process, so.
If I can just give a little backstory, uh, this home was resided in, in December of twenty twenty, it had a fire damage. The insurance company, because it went through the roof, is an automatic, they just deemed it a total loss. Unfortunately, when I purchased this home, unbeknownst to me, and unbeknownst to the sellers, there is two deeds to the home. So if you can imagine, there's one home and two separate deed of properties. I own one of the deeds. The sellers still own the other part of the deed, we didn't realize that, so part of the house is actually owned by the state, I'm in the process now of redeeming that from the auditor's office, so that I own the whole house, so that then I can move forward with making decisions about the house, which is reason why this fire happened in December. And nothing has seemingly been done with the house since then, I'm trying to actually gain ownership of the whole house, so that I can move forward with it. The property is, there's no trash, the grass is mowed, the windows are boarded, um, there's zero evidence of anyone in the home. Because I'm there frequently, the neighbors have my phone numbers, if they have any concerns, they contact me. I've taken out almost ten tons of trash that was in it, so the home is completely stripped down to the two by fours. Um, I did a cost basis analysis for rebuilding the home, and, uh, that's not advantageous for me, because I would be selling the property and I would be doing so at a loss. I have had, um, two different people come to me asking about selling the home as it is. Meaning they have the means and the capacity and the wherewithal and the knowledge to rebuild it, um, with the structure as it is. I can't entertain any of those yet, because I don't, I don't own it yet, I'm still waiting to get that from the auditor's office, so I'm asking the board to allow that auditor's office at the state level to give me the other deed. Once I actually legally own the whole house, then I will entertain for a period of thirty days, anyone who's interested in redoing the house as it is. If after that period of time, there's no interest, then I have every intent of demolishing it and keeping it a clean lot, and then attempting to sell the lot. So I realize it's a lot of information.
Where, uh, so in other words, you have, I believe, a property line that runs through part of the house?
Correct, uh, if, as you're looking at the picture, my guess is the building, the bedroom on the right-hand side was an addition. At some point in time, what they have done is they bought a little section from the neighbor to build that addition. We just didn't realize it at the time of the sale, and so I should have actually signed two deeds, the seller should have sold me two deeds, and we didn't know that, and I only got part of the house. So I'm doing my best to clear up that issue, these are out of state sellers, they don't want anything to do with the property. Uh, per the auditor's office, when I called today, they have until September twenty eighth to redeem, to pay the back taxes. They've had no interest in that, the auditors already accept my payment on the back taxes. So, as of October first, they will do the paperwork to submit and hand the deed over to me.
When, when do you think that would come to a conclusion?
Uh, they, she didn't really want to be pinned down at the auditor's office, but the process is that the state auditor gathers all the paperwork, making sure that all the proper notifications were made to these out of state owners. Once they have that together, uh, then they turn it over to Fayette County to report all the deeds. She said maybe two weeks at the state level, and then depending on Fayette County, maybe three weeks at their level, that was as much notice as she could give me. And it, and by judging the length of the meeting, the city has a lot on their plate, and it would seem like I'm a fully attentive owner, and so it, it just seems easier to let me resolve this issue the best I can, and either sell it as it is, or do the demolition myself and make the city not responsible for this.
Bill, my, I have a question, she says sell it as this, can she sell it as it is, since the structural board is the same situation we had on Highland?
Just, just about, it's, it's gonna be, if you sell it to someone, they, they have to be aware that this is going to be.
I agreed, and I have a document that I drafted up, which I'm nothing but transparent, which means whoever buys it, they have to have their own contractor walkthrough, everything has to be done under building permit, they have to, you know, I'm not just gonna let anyone buy it, because it's not a product, we're just anyone, so there's a narrow window who might benefit from this property, but there's enough of the structure that's salvageable for the right person with the right skill set, they can make a home out of it, which I think would serve the community way more than just an empty lot. If possible, but yes, whoever does this, I mean, they, there has to be full disclosure, uh, there's a notice posted in front of the house, you know, that the city's done. Both buyers that I've talked to, I've explained to them the process that it's at, one potential buyer has already done a walkthrough of it, it's, again, it's down to the studs, so people can see what it is.
Are there any insurance funds to assist you?
So I did receive a payout on that. But part of what it needs to be brought back up to livable, because I have no intention of keeping the house, I have to sell the property, I don't, I don't want to be a landlord anymore. I would end up coming out at a loss for me to put the money back into, to making it. And then what I could potentially sell the house for, I have talked with a Realtor, who helps me understand the market value on that road. Of what my best selling price. of what my best selling price would be for that, for that house. So I've tried to do my due diligence to realize is, do I put money back in?
Well, that's, that's probably the same question a potential buyer would be asking.
If you're going to live in the home, and you ha- and you're gonna stay in the home, you're not gonna sell it, you're actually just gonna enjoy the home as a homeowner, then it's it's a great investment, but as far as selling it, now that puts it at a different point.
Bill and Mayor, in less complicated matters that have come before us in the past, we've actually tabled this type of item to allow the owner to come up with, she, it appears what she said has made all the efforts through the auditor's office and everything, and you, you cannot legally tear down that half that's on the other piece of property. I I would make a motion that we table this matter uh, un- until October the eleventh, with the understanding that Ms. Runyon would peer before council or someone representing her to give us a stance.
Yes, absolutely.
And that's my motion.
I'll second that.
I'll send a motion and a second to table any action regarding one three seven Broadway Avenue, map seven, parcel one sixteen, owned by Erin Runyon, until the, an update on on what's going on on the eleventh of October, is that right?
Yes.
Yes, sir. All right, any discussion?
Yes, sir, just just one other thing, um, Ms. Runyon, if you could provide council any documentation next month of correspondence with the uh uh state auditor's office, Fayette County government, uh, of potential buyers, the owner of the other property, any and all of that documentation, so they can make a logical decision would be.
Absolutely, everything has been via phone, but I will see if they can give me anything in writing, or at least I can reference a conversation with who I've spoken to about that.
Well, thank you, and I and I appreciate both parties here, we've had conversations on the phone, of course, I know the Farish is prior, I I spoke with you, and I I appreciate you you all speaking with me in a in a logical manner, and 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 sometimes I don't get that, and I really appreciate it when 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 folks talk and we can come to an understanding, so thank you.
We're really not used to people offering to demolish these buildings, so it's kind of a nice surprise to see some.
Yeah.
I'm I'm all, if it, if no one wants it, I'm absolutely gonna take care of it.
Thank you.
Mayor, I'll move the previous question.
All those in favor, six of them saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion's agreed to, seven zero, uh, which brings me back to a question, Mr. Hanabas, regarding the Farish property. Way I understand it, uh, they really have to the, till into October to come back with uh, proposal to tear it down themselves, uh, would it be proper just to table theirs too?
That that's entirely up to council.
Yeah, there's no problem, I mean, either way.
It'll be.
I I just say we all table theirs.
What would council prefer, or council?
That's uh, I think it makes sense. Is there a motion?
I'll I'll make a motion.
Mr. Hazel makes motion to table any action of three twelve Main Street, parcel five hundred, owned by Joy Lynn Farish, is there a second?
I'll second.
I'll second.
Property moved in second, any discussions? Hearing that, we vote the motion, all those in favor, six of them saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no, motion's agreed to, seven zero, table action at three twelve Main Street.
Okay, the other uh A and B under the same item, uh, and I don't think anyone is here uh to represent one 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 nine Minden Road. These are the photographs on the screen now, as I scroll through them. That is item uh sixteen A, that's still sixteen A right there. Sixteen B is Rocklick Road, uh, the map and parcel number's on the screen, two oh five Rocklick Road. And here is a photograph of that structure.
Are a- any of the, any of these properties the of that Ace has, is any, are any of these properties for the playground that?
No, no, sir, they're not. Um, and and actually, it was on the agenda of the structural inspection board, and uh, that item was tabled because it's in negotiation with the city of Oak Hill. The the one that's on the proposed playground.
Okay.
But but that is not.
I I just wonder why Ace can't tear these down themselves. I I don't get that. I mean, uh, I just, I don't, I'll see why they can't pay for it, why Ace tear them down themselves.
Mayor, I move we accept fifteen A and B as recommended.
I'll second that motion.
The property moved in second, we accept the recommendation, the structural inspection board for property A, one 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 nine Minden Road, map twenty seven, parcel eighteen, owned by Ace Adventure, and B, two oh five Rocklick Road, map fifty nine E, parcel eighteen, owned by Ace Adventure Resort. Any discussion? Hearing that, we vote the motion, all those in favor, six of them saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no, motion's agreed to, seven zero. Anything else in that area, Mr. Hanabas?
No, sir, I believe, I don't believe anyone else is here for a particular item on the agenda, so we'll go back to uh
To unfinished business?
Yes, sir.
Unfinished business, number two, municipal sales and use tax ordinance, second reading, public hearing.
Okay, and Mayor, um this is a uh, an official public hearing in conjunction with this meeting, we have to have a separate public hearing that we call for uh, public comment, so the municipal sales tax ordinance, the second reading, if I I will ask on your behalf, sir, if if there is anyone here to make comment on the sales and use tax of one percent, um, please, please feel free to step to the podium and make a comment, and let us know whether you're, you support or are opposed to the one percent municipal sales tax.
Would you want to state when this will go into effect?
This this will, this ordinance act, I'm sorry, the move.
It'll, the sales tax will go in July first of.
But the sales tax itself, July first of two thousand twenty-two, but the ordinance itself, this is the second reading that will be adopted. It has to be approved, the the reason for it being July uh, twenty twenty-two is that this has to be approved by the Home Rule Board. We have to have an ordinance in place, but this will be the second and final reading of the ordinance, so. Uh, sir, I I see no uh, no person's wishing to make comment for or against the second reading of this ordinance. And and again, I want to say this is a, an official public hearing, and uh you may close the public hearing at this point if you're confident no one wishes to speak.
Seeing no one, and no one, even on the Zoom or in person, I will close this public hearing, since with no one has uh we've had it, but no one has shown up to speak one way or the other.
And and now council will take.
Yeah, is there a motion?
Take item up.
I'll make a motion, we uh, accept this as the second reading and adoption of the municipal sales and use tax ordinance.
There a second?
I'll second.
Probably moved in second, any discussion?
I have a discussion here, uh, about this, what do we? I just, as far as taxing, one percent sales tax, I know the revenue we're going to generate from that, do we have uh, or when do we plan on coming up with a plan on how we're gonna spend the money, like this?
Council will, council will actually uh budget these funds, however, uh so, you know, to answer that, council will fine tune this plan, now what we can spend it on are items such as uh drainage, sidewalks, recreation parks, and economic development.
Cannot.
Can.
Can.
Oh, can. Those are logical items that I believe council will lean towards. Uh, and and items that we'll discuss with the Home Rule Board, but but th- these items will be budgeted by by council.
And when when do we do that? I mean, that's what I'm.
February and March, we have a budget hearings, and we should have a better handle on how much we're gonna reap from the one percent to.
Okay.
By that time.
Right.
Would you think so?
And then we'll set them.
Not by the budget, because we won't get our first collection in October.
But you don't have a.
Oh, I have the estimate, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
And we'll have an estimate where we can say, we can put a certain percentage towards this from this sales tax. I just, okay, okay, all right.
Yeah, because we were, we were discussing during the break about, you know, we don't, we don't want to just tax for the sake of tax.
No.
We want to have a designated use of.
Right, yeah. So people can see what we're spending the actual money on, and we're just taking it from them.
And and I will, I will say that I I think it's important that we talk about it sometimes, our budget is about four million dollars citywide. What I think, what I know needs done, we should, and and based on our population, we should be having revenue of about twelve million dollars. There's a shortfall, there's there's things that you all, and me included, would love to see happen, it's very difficult with four million dollars. Now, the other thing I want to point out, if you look at other cities, some of the things they have to do with their one percent sales tax is things like shore up their pension plan, uh, pay their insurance, things that don't directly benefit the taxpayer. We, on the other hand, are are gonna be looking at things that directly benefit the taxpayer, we're better positioned, uh, so.
The one thing, our pension plan, our pension plan is totally solvent, and has been.
Correct.
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 One of the few in the state.
Right, so so we're, we're in the driver's seat.
So this one percent won't be used for bonuses or anything like that, correct?
Not, and that's, that's council's decision, but that's, that's not, not the way I don't believe it will be paid, right?
Okay.
That's all I have, I'm having things.
Well, any other discussion? Hearing that, we vote the motion, all those in favor, six of them saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion's agreed to, seven zero. Number three, examination of demolition report for forty-six Beaver Road, map fifty nine E, parcel twenty-eight, owned by Joseph and Sharon Kelly, deceased, in care of Joseph A. Kelly, Jr., Mr. Hanabas.
This is the structure you see on your screen before demolition. After demolition, the report is in your pocket, I'm glad to pull that up, if anybody needs to examine the report in detail from me. But uh, otherwise, we just need an acceptance of the, of the report of demolition.
Mayor, I move we s- we consider three and four together, and recommend our move that we approve the recommendation.
I'll second that. All right, so property moved in second, that we approve items three and four. And it's been moved into, any discussion? Hearing that, we vote the motion, all those in favor, six of them saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no, motion's agreed to, seven zero.
I'd say, I don't know, he just texted.
He must not have been able to chime in or something.
Been request for, from someone on the Zoom to talk, uh, I think regarding the sales taxes, council want to go back and pick that up, or what?
I think we should. Yeah, I think he was muted.
All right, we'll go ahead now, uh, before we get to number five.
Who is it?
Uh, Kevin Willis. All right, Mr. Willis, are you there?
Yeah, I was trying to get your attention there, I was gonna say, Bill's got me muted, so I can't talk on this side. But I I just wanted to speak on the one percent sales tax, I've been talking to quite a few different people, and well, with Montgomery and Fayetteville and all that, and I just, I'm, only thing that I'm concerned with with the sales tax, sales tax, is I'm not against the sales tax, but I would like to show the businesses where the money's gonna be allocated to. I mean, so when we get closer to doing the one percent sales tax, I would like, I mean, me as a business owner investing in the area, I I would like to see where the money's going, where it's gonna be allocated, because, I mean, the figures that I'm hearing and things of that nature, you're you're talking about an additional one point seven million dollars. That's just what I'm hearing, put into the, into a general fund to alleviate debt, but if we're operating off of four million dollars now, and and everything, because I mean, the city's got new trucks, we got new fire engines, we've got everything taken care of. We need to look into these, you know, the things that attract people to this area. So I mean, I would like to see, like, where it's allocated to, whether it be to sidewalks, where it would be to more, um, you know, I would like, I wouldn't mind to see um them to fix these sidewalks and put new streetlights in, you know. Uh, you go, I I'm gonna point out one, you go into Fayetteville, they put all new LED lights all the way down, and I'm telling you what, it looks so nice, I mean, it looks attractive, it's bright, I mean, it's welcoming. You go down our main street, and i- it is lit, but i- it's not, it's i- it's, it's two thousand twenty-one, this is LED, and, you know, it could be so much brighter and nicer. So what I'm wanting to say about this is, is just show where the funds are gonna go, where they're gonna be allocated to, and let let's spend it wisely, you know, don't, don't put it in a general fund and make excuses about putting it in a general fund, because if everybody else is doing it, we can do it too. So I I would just like to see it allocated out correctly, and put it, put it to bring people in, make it more inviting. That, that's all I've got to say about that, but I just, like I said, I just like to say, uh, the one percent, I I believe is a good thing if it's used correctly.
I just want to emphasize, once again, this money has to go into the general fund. That's, that's the place that it has to go in order for us to ever use it to levy more money. So that's where it has to go. We will.
Okay.
Everybody can see where it's gonna be get, I mean, we're not, we don't just go spend money, or we wouldn't have what we have now, so.
I understand. Go ahead.
Damae, is it, is it possible after it's transferred into the general fund, that we can move it to, say, recreation fund?
But you'd lose all that, you'd lose your ability.
To leverage.
To leverage bonds if you need to issue a bond for something.
I I just.
To use that as revenue.
Yeah, I'd like to to echo Mr. Willis's sentiment, um, and and just to assure him that as far as me on council, I like to see it spent on the sidewalks, the lights, the the park at Needle's Eye, that we've tried for years to get a grant, to get it going. That extra money would help so much in getting that project off the ground, which would be a great asset to Oak Hill with the new national park.
And we have these discussions every spring.
Yeah.
And you tell, you know, you tell us in the budget, we just come to you with suggestions, and then you tell us what to do, and I don't think we've ever not done what we've been told.
Mr. Willis, do you have a copy of what Mr. Hanabas went over in terms of areas that the money could be used in?
No.
Would you, Bill, make that available to Mr.?
I was gonna say, I've looked for it, the only thing I've seen is that it's gonna go in a general fund and alleviate the city of their.
No, we've never said alleviate debt.
This, this, this identifies areas that it could be spinning.
We've never seen, we've never said, because that's what I was talking about. It, you can, but we're positioned where we don't, I just said we do not have to shore up our pension plans, we don't have to pay off debt. We're in the driver's seat, that's what I said a minute ago.
Right, and we're, I mean, this is gonna be a tool, I mean, extra money to do a lot of things that you all want done, that now we say we don't have the money. Um, there's no restrictions on what it can be spent for. So, uh, the one percent util, or the one percent sales tax can be spent on anything. The things that Bill mentioned are things that we had talked about, that would be good things to spend it on, recreation, sidewalks.
We intend to restrict what we're gonna use it for.
You, and and that can be done. That can be done, it can be part of a restricted fund balance, council's allowed to do that.
Will will you make that list available that you, you went over with us too?
Yeah, the uh, the. The giant sidewalks, parks.
Yeah, yeah.
And uh, economic development, those things, sure.
Will you see, gets copied in, please? And then also, of these budget meetings, I mean, they're open to the public, right? So then, I mean, so you, you're allowed to come to the meeting and see exactly where we put the money.
Right.
So, I mean, that's a, that's another way.
So, I mean, that's a, that's another way to hold us accountable for what, what we're doing.
Right.
I, like I said, I just think that, like, if we could just make, make the, the main street just more appealing, and it's not gonna, I mean, with the money that's added to it, I mean, I, I just, like I said, I just think that it would attract a lot more business, and instead of people driving through, stopping there, they'll stop here.
Don't mention that anymore, please.
What's that?
Hey, I'm sorry.
The F word.
You'll me take you off my phone list, Kevin.
Hey, we need to be better than them, that's what I'm saying, we need to be better than them.
All right, move down to number five, consideration and adoption of a resolution to lay assessment lien on property located at one-one-three-eight Menden Road, map fifty-eight L, parcel twelve, owned by Alma Campbell, care of Diana McCumbers, Mr. Hannabah.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you. Appreciate you coming.
Thank you.
Thank you for your cooperation.
Okay, uh, and again, this is, uh, to lay the assessment lien on this property, the photograph is on the screen now. Uh, this is what it looks like today. And, uh, you get the documents here.
Do you have any idea, Mr. Hannabash, if anyone ever, when this is done, are these lots ever sold? Does people ever sell them?
Sometimes they will, and I, I think, uh, I think you will see more and more of that. These slots going, uh, going back into the marketplace and being reused, uh, but not, not often enough by my standard. It's the same reason you have dilapidated property that property's not being, uh, reused at this point, I think it's symptomatic of the economy that is about to change in a big way for Oak Hill and the rest of Fayette County.
I think John Tuggles' house was a lot.
Well, that's true, there, there have been some.
Was.
Where John Tuggles resides.
And the one across from it.
And the one across from it. That's correct.
Was repurposed.
Very nice homes.
Um, the amount of the, the assessment lien, an amount of five thousand eight hundred and three dollars and ninety cents.
Move that we pass the resolution for the amount stated by the city manager.
I'll second.
Property moved in second regarding the adoption of a resolution to lay assessment on lien property owned by Alma Campbell, any discussion? Hearing now, we vote the motion, all is in favor, signify saying aye. Those opposed, no. The motion's agreed to, seven zero, and now move to number six.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Is it a possibility, all of these demolition areas, that the city could pick up some of that property, or all of it?
To take ownership of it?
Yes, especially, especially the ones for back taxes.
Right, um, if they, if they sell for back taxes, the, a- as you are well aware, we talked about, the, these liens will be set aside, if this property becomes tax delinquent, a lien will be set aside and the city can purchase it, uh, for what the back taxes are owed, on, on the, on the property, if that happens. Now, this is in Menden, uh, property is devalued in Menden because of the PCB super fund site. Uh, so whether, you know, I think at one point, these would be becoming very, very uh, desirable properties, they're not today. And the super fund site situation will go on twenty to thirty years.
They're moving in, uh, drilling equipment now, to do drilling down the bedrock to test for water contamination.
Right.
Would there have, would there have to be legislation, or can there be legislation? Because I agree with Mr. Smallwood is saying that the city should be able to recoup something by getting some of these properties, they seem to be all over the place. I think that's a really good idea, that, would it take legislation out of Charleston to make this easy or possible, or?
I, I think so, and, and I've, I've actually written the city ordinance, you know, I passed around, I believe, that, that addresses this.
We just, uh, legislative retreat they had in Charleston, which I didn't attend, but I forwarded, uh, information that Bill provided. One of the senators, and you probably know him, David, from the Northern Panhandle, Rand, or, I can't think of his name right offhand, but when we had to the league conference, he brought it up in a workshop, that something needs to be done. He, he represents primarily municipalities, as opposed to the counties, we don't have any standing. And, and Bill has addressed that before, I think the auditors are the ones that took exception, is that correct?
Right.
So we need to, you know how things work down there. So, but we need to, whatever that word is, we need to do it to get their attention, because it does need to happen, there's millions, probably billions of tax revenues that we, as, as cities in West Virginia, don't get to read and do all the work.
Tom, did the municipal league make that part of their legislative agenda?
I, I, I don't know, I forwarded to them, I couldn't make it because I was sick.
Right.
But I sent them a copy of Bill's proposed ordinance and the state code, which is applied to, so.
If they do.
They're in interims right now, so, I, I don't know, but I, I can find out.
Be nice to know, and if they do, we could perhaps get a process of resolutions in support of.
Yeah, yeah, and, and, and I think, I think the league was with us before, were they not, Bill?
They were.
We just need to drive it home more, more and more, I guess.
Right.
Braces, number six, bid opening for demolition of residential structure located Old Menden Road, map thirty-three, parcel one-two-seven, owned by Frederick Riggins and King Moses Riggins.
Okay. So I have, uh, I've received.
Previously?
Hmm, I don't think we did.
Yeah, I'm waiting.
Yeah.
Did we?
Yeah.
Diane seconded.
Yeah, I marked it off.
Okay.
We did it.
Okay. Okay, this is on Old Menden Road, uh, I think a lot of us have seen this structure. We advertised it for bid, uh, after the, uh, process of, uh, requesting the owner to demolish, and of course, I brought a letter opener and lost it while I've been sitting here, so, I found it. Okay. So two sealed bids received for demolition of this structure. And the first bid is from H E R I Environmental, West Virginia LLC. It appears the policies, the bid is in order, and the bid amount is fourteen thousand nine hundred and twenty dollars and zero cents.
Is that just one structure?
Yeah, for this structure right here, here's another structure, that's standing on the road, looking down on it, and this is ground level, looking at it. Okay, the next bid is from Empire Salvage. The bid appears in order, and the bid amount from Empire Salvage is seven thousand five hundred dollars and zero cents.
Mayor, I move we accept the Empire bids.
Third second.
I'll second.
Property move, we accept the Empire Salvage out of Bluefield, West Virginia. Any discussion? Hearing now, we vote the motion, all is in favor, signify saying aye. Those opposed, no. Motion's agreed to, seven zero, which moves us to number seven, consideration and adoption of a resolution for the city to demolish the structure located at ten sixteen Summerly Avenue, map sixteen, parcel fifty, owned by Arthur J. Atkins.
This is a structure I think we're familiar with, uh, uh.
It was a mobile home, was it?
Right, it's, it's, it's a mobile home built over top of ten sixteen Summerly Avenue, there was a originally petition of thirty-five, with thirty-five signatures that came before the city, and structural inspection board reviewed it. And, uh, we, you know, we've gone through the meeting, we had guest speakers here, or, or guests that, that spoke on behalf of this structure, and so now, before you, after proper notification, and, uh, order to the owner to demolish, that, uh, it's up for consideration of council to pass a resolution to demolish the structure.
Hey, Bill.
Yes, ma'am.
It's Diane, I'd like to go ahead and make that motion that we can, uh, adopt this resolution for the city to demolish this structure.
Okay.
Third second.
I'll second.
The property move in second, we consider and adopt the resolution to demolish the structure at ten sixteen Summerly Avenue, any discussion? Hearing now, we vote the motion, all is in favor, signify saying aye. Those opposed, no, the motion's agreed to, we go number eight, consideration and adoption of a resolution for the city to demolish the structure located at two sixteen Cheston Avenue, map thirty-two, parcel seventy, owned by Paul H. and Clarice Lassinger and Clifford M. Bragg.
Hey, Mayor, on this structure, uh, I think we're all intimately familiar with this as well, uh, the property owner has, um, um, agreed that he would demolish the structure, and he's actually begun demolition, you know, it, it.
Just the guy that came to the meeting and spoke, we spoke on Zoom with him?
He did, right, and, uh, we had tried to work with him, he was gonna remodel the, the structure, and we went, we went on and on for a year or two, and I think we finally went all the way back through the process, and, and, uh, so I think you can see, I, I'm, I'm sure all of you vividly remember all the photographs before, so you can see that there is demolition, I don't, I can't speak for how quickly this is gonna happen, uh, but, um, um, there is demolition and.
I was there today, a- and I looked at it, and, uh, there is movement, yes.
Would a resolution encourage faster movement? More expedient?
It would, I mean, we're getting pretty proficient at it, I can get one down pretty quick, so, I might beat him.
Bill, do they have a proper way of disposing all that material themselves?
They did what now, I'm sorry?
Do they have, uh, the proper means of just, uh, disposing all that material that you're aware of?
Well, I, you know, Diane, I'm, I'm not an expert by any stretch, and I don't mean to sound like one, but when I, when I look at the structure, you can see the height of this structure and the, and the equipment that's being used here, you, you really need to get above it with an excavator to do a a quick job, now that's not to say that I can't go in with a crowbar and tear a complete house down if you give me enough time.
Right.
And, and when I was twenty years old.
I'll move the adoption of the resolution.
I'll second the motion. The property move in second, that we adopt the resolution to, to demolish the structure at two sixteen Cheston Avenue, Oak Hill. And it's really sad in a way, that house is one of the oldest houses still, still standing in Oak Hill, the house is a hundred and five years old. It's really sad that the house had to end up going this direction, with the oldest structure still standing in town. There aren't many houses in Oak Hill that old, still, still standing, that's for sure.
I, I'll, I'll say this without trying to be deceitful, and I'm saying this publicly, ob- obviously, I'm not being deceitful whatsoever, or to mislead council, I'm gonna, I'm gonna come right up behind you. And, and as long as, as long as there's process, I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna do this common sense wise, okay, so, so, uh.
But you have a tool in the toolkit now.
Right, thank you, yeah.
Any more discussion? Hearing now, we vote the motion, all is in favor, signify saying aye. Those opposed, no, motion's agreed to, seven zero, Crown Act ordinance, Mr. Hannabash.
Okay, I think we were, th- this is on the agenda, and the, the reason it's on the agenda, I believe we were gonna address this, planned to address this in October, but I didn't want anybody to think I'd forgotten about it, so it, uh, uh, I started to take it off the agenda, and I knew I'd get quizzed about it, or figured I'd get quizzed about it, but it's not, it's not dropped, it's just tabled for a couple months, so.
They need a motion table to October.
Yes, sir.
I so moved.
Second.
The property move in second, to table the Crown Act proposed ordinance until October. Any more discuss, any discussion? Hearing now, we vote the motion, all is in favor, signify saying aye. Those opposed, no. Motion's agreed to, seven zero, number ten, appointments to City of Oak Hill Building Commission, Hannabah.
Uh, the, the building commission, uh, obviously has, has a vacancy, actually, it has two vacancies on it. Um, we solicited for this, we've, we've received one, council considered last month, uh, from a out-of-town residence, barely out of town, but out of town. I, I have not received any further, applicants for this position, it's, it's an important position, it is, it's not that active until we build something, so, uh, we, we need to fill those, it's not very important that we do in a fairly timely manner, but, uh, I will try my best to solicit applicants for this, and any of you all that can a- as well, or, I mean, you're free to nominate somebody, but, but of course.
Who are the remaining members, Bill?
Uh, I, I looked at the vacancies today, Mr. Fraser and somebody else, it'll be right here. Uh, Jack Flint and Mr. Fraser have created vacancies, and Don Williams, David Stewart, and Chris Robinson are the three remaining active members.
Two.
Two.
Can we make an exception, uh, on that ruling there? Because the guy who applied for it didn't get it because he was out of city limits, but he's more than well qualified.
Yeah, born and where?
He's more than well qualified.
More than well qualified.
Oh, yeah.
To do the job.
Yeah.
In fact, his name is on a lot of the building permits here in town.
Right.
I think there was a problem there, uh, Demita, you had something to say.
I'm pretty sure that the ordinance says they have to be in city limits. Yeah. Um, and the reason I don't think we can make an exception is because when, if we issue a bond for that building commission, they check all that to make sure everything's in order, and.
It's, it's in the third paragraph on the screen in front of you.
It agreed to annexation.
It, it does say, th- this is taken from the, uh, from the code, which is taken from state law, says all members of such board shall be residents of the city, so, state code.
Is that one of those we could address through, uh, home rule?
I, I'm sorry, I can't.
Is that one we could address through home rule?
Um, I feel you could.
It probably should.
I'd have to, I think we'd have to ask the bond attorney, because.
We could look at it.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, the bond attorney may have.
Because he, that, that person, Charles Thomas, he'd be an excellent member of that commission.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
I think we did, did we change this home rule on the the dem, the politics?
Yeah, we changed the.
Or, or did we do just through Civil Service Commission?
I think it was Civil Service, we changed the rules that state.
Yeah, that's another thing you have to get, for so many Republicans.
There's no reason for that.
I mean, it's qualified, it's qualified regardless.
I'll, I'll make a motion, and we table the appointments till next council meeting.
I'll second, the property move in second, that the appointments to the Oak Hill Building Commission be tabled to October eleven. Oh, one question, Mr. Hannabash.
Yes, ma'am.
Are, are these people who should have some sort kind of background, that any, be like a, a, a construction background, engineer, civil engineering, or what are we talking about? Or is that even necessary?
The con, actual construction, not so, not, it, this is my opinion, actual construction's not that important, but I think, uh, familiarity with, with contracts and banking, bonding, uh, that kind of background. But I think familiarity with, with contracts and banking, bonding, that kind of background.
All financial, like someone who may have an MBA or something like that.
Somebody that has closed on a lot of property that
Like a realtor?
Uh, uh, yeah, a realtor might be a good person that, that would have some experience with that.
We, we should take a look at that. As long as we're breathing, okay.
Yeah, they have to have a pause.
I, I don't want to think. All right, number eleven, are we already voted on that one?
Didn't we?
Did we vote?
Yeah, it was a table.
Yeah, we tabled, did we vote? All right, well, vote the motion, all those in favor signify saying aye. Those opposed, no. Motion's agreed to. Eleven, consideration to amend the City of Oak Hill Municipal Code four point oh eight point oh five oh. Manufacturing, compounding or preparing products, processing of food accepted and OHMC four point oh eight point oh six oh, business of selling tangible property, sales exempt, second reading.
And this, this goes hand in hand with one percent sales tax, I'll let Demita explain.
Oh, in this, because we have to lower some part of our BNO tax to implement the sales tax. We just eliminated the manufacturing BNO tax and lowered the retail sales tax from point three eight to point three oh.
I'll make a motion, we accept this as the second reading and adoption of the changes to the municipal code stated.
Is there a second?
Second.
Property moved in second, any discussion? We'll vote the motion, all those in favor signify saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The motion is agreed to, seven zero. Twelve ordinance to increase the pay of council, second reading, Mr. Hannabas.
Okay, and I, I believe council had a discussion, uh, well, I know they had a discussion last month during the first reading. So if council would want to fine tune the ordinance that would increase pay of council, and I believe what the consensus of council was, uh, attendance of meetings, am I right on that?
Representing.
In the minutes, if it was, if it was council appointed.
Right.
Right.
Yeah.
I, I have, I have one suggestion as, as an administrator on Demita's behalf. We, you know, not, and I, don't take this as disrespect because it's not meant as that. With members of council, this council, future councils, and I'm looking twenty years down the road. We all know that everybody that's elected, I've sat in your seats, I'm not talking about you, I'm talking about me as well. We know that everybody elected is not necessarily an admirable person. If they're, what, what I would like to see, instead of somebody submitting to Demita for pay, that council actively review these pay requests of their fellow members of council. Uh, I don't, I don't want to put, it's not funny really, because I don't want to put Demita in a position of saying, no, Mr. Smallwood, I, I think this is over the line. I don't want her to be put in that position.
I'd rather see the city manager make that decision.
Well, no, I'm not going. I'm not, I'm not going to make it.
I'm not, I'm not agi, I'm, I'm against the, um, the pay per meeting as far as that goes. But if it would pass, I think it should come down before council each time that it's brought before us and we approve it, so it's all public.
Which is more cumbersome for you, Demita?
If it's council appointed meetings, then there, there won't be much of a question, I don't think. Is that, are you, are you thinking about council appointed?
I, I think that's what was discussed last month, but if it goes outside of that, I, I mean, it can, we all got to admit, it could get ridiculous.
I thought we had agreed to what Demita suggested.
Okay.
That's what I understood.
That's what I understood.
And, and I, I'll, I'll say this, that Demita and I did not discuss this item, that comment by me was, was by me, not not on Demita's, I mean, it was on Demita's behalf, but she didn't prompt me to.
Yeah, sure, Bill.
Thank you.
I, 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 I've moved that we prove the ordinance.
Well, actually I had something I'd like to add to that, Mr. Perry. As somebody who's talked to a lot of people who volunteer on these boards, I think we're going to lose a lot of public volunteerism if council is getting paid to be an elective representative, but then also getting paid to sit on these boards where we're asking the public to volunteer their time. I think that's going to be a serious issue for a lot of people, for example, like the Oakleaf Committee. We have in a, a city council appointed person to that, but then the rest of those people are volunteers from our community. My concern is that we're going to seriously lose the people who volunteer for these committees if we go this route.
I would, I would agree, I've had some feedback from, from people regarding this and not the actual raise part of it. It's more so of if I'm going to a planning meeting, but it's only a planning meeting, where everybody's there's volunteers sent me, then I'm getting paid to go. So I, I, I definitely see where she's coming from on that, because it is a, I think it's, at some point, we gotta be public servants too, we're supposed to be public servants, I guess. So I mean, I'm all for the raise, I think I'm a little, a little shaky on the, the meeting. Because what is a city, what do we, I mean, what are we calling a city appointed meeting? Because I'm on tons of committees.
That we're, that you all make a motion and appoint them to, I mean, I'm thinking more like planning and zoning, BZA, where you have to have a representative recreation.
Region for
Region, yeah, region for Not like, well, we don't really appoint anybody to Oakleaf. But
The planning and zoning is a good example.
The planning and zoning is a good example.
So I can't
I, I, again, I'm sorry, Tom.
I can't recall, did we specify an amount per meeting?
I think we did, yes. One hundred or a hundred and twenty-five.
Yes, yes, we did. Uh, you know, I would suggest that, that we adopt it with the list as provided by Demita. Approval of the council, adopt the list that she would provide in terms of those designated appointees. Is that making sense? Or is that much clearer?
Only those appointed.
Right.
Well, I have a question, like, I was asked to present a key, uh, uh, over at the Oakleaf Beauty Pageant to one of the judges, Monty Durham. Has a TV show, Say Yes to the Dress. I had to present a key, or I was asked to do so, and also was asked to do a resolution of, of for the nine eleven, uh, committee down here at the football, old football field on Saturday night. Uh, so I'm just, are, are those, are those, are those part of it, or that's not what we're talking?
Last meeting, we said no.
All right, I never was sure on that one.
We said no, we, we
I don't recall the numbers, but I do think it's just standing committees.
Right.
Okay, right, all right.
You don't have to accept it, though, like if you're like
I think you do.
You, you have to?
I think so, now you can return it, but I think you have to accept it for other purposes.
I'll be out of the job, I think.
But I think, I think, you know, just generally, what we're saying is you wouldn't get it for ceremonial purposes. It would only be those appointed positions, and I would leave that decision with Demita respectfully. I think she has better control and realization than any of us would have.
And maybe you all can bring that up if you want to pay the, you know, we do pay Civil Service Commission, sanitary board, I mean, maybe if you want to pay something to
Everybody on the committee.
Yeah, your BZA and planning, that's something.
But that's not part of this motion or this ordinance.
Right, I'm just saying separately, that you all might take that up at another meeting.
I just have a question for Mr. Hannabas here, real quickly. Is that the pay rate?
Yeah.
After tax.
That's for two meetings.
I'm, I'm a second, uh, Council Perry's motion that the list that is provided by Demita.
And you want the list in, in the motion?
Yes.
And then you said we had to take it if we go to the meeting?
I think so, I think, I know we had to take our legislative pay, that's all I know. Now you could turn it back in, but and, and I could be in there. That's something that, that need, needs to, an opinion on. But it has nothing to do with adoption of motion. Really. May I move the previous question?
All right, we'll vote the motion, number twelve. All those in favor signify saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no.
No.
No. The motion is agreed to, five two.
Who are the noes?
I was the noe.
Benitez and Oh, who's the third one? Oh. Four, three. Three, two, four, three. Uh, because Mr. Hazel, Councilman Hazel, Jackson and Hodges. Four, three, all right. New business, recommendation from sanitary board to establish maximum distance for required connection to a main sewer line. Hannabas?
Okay, um, this is our sewer ordinance, which is part of the city ordinance, of course. But, uh, we would, the sanitary board would recommend that council consider, and I'll explain this a little bit, but the maximum distance for required connection to a main sewer line. When you, when you run a main sewer line, the distance from the sewer line to the property line of the individual, uh, we recommend that be established at one hundred and fifty feet. I believe, Demita, correct me if I'm wrong, it's one hundred feet now?
It's one hundred now.
It's one hundred feet now. But if it's, if the main sewer line is a hundred and fifty feet or further away from a property line, then, uh, the city does not require, would not require a sewer connection be made if a new main line was running by someone's property greater than a hundred and fifty feet away from their property line. It's a hundred feet now.
So Bill, you're saying if it's two hundred feet, what?
That you have a choice that, that, that sewer does not have to be provided to Mr. Perry's property.
If it's in the city?
If, yeah, if it's in the ci, if it's in our service area.
Could, could we not re, could, can we not be like the gas company? And establish a, a, a foot? And anything beyond that the owner's responsible for, but require tap on? Making sense for instructions?
I, I think there's a couple of things coming in there. The main line extension issue with Public Service Commission. And I what we're trying to do is limit the financial exposure of the sanitary board, correct?
Right.
So could you from the main line over to the property line, let's say it's two hundred feet, could you bill them in accordance with that provision in the state code? I mean, I, I mean, sanitary board has a reason behind this, what, what are we trying to accomplish, Bill?
Okay, the, the, the purpose behind it is that currently it says one hundred feet. We want to make that broader to one hundred and fifty feet, so that if, if, if your property line is a hundred and fifty feet away and we're laying a main line, that you'll still be required to, to make that connection to the sewer. It, it will encompass more people being required to be connected.
You're trying to make the property owner, in other words, you're not trying to eliminate the need for us to serve them. You're trying to improve that possibility of them being so.
Correct.
Okay.
Because I misunderstood.
And, and now there's not, they don't pay the, you know, like today, or, or at a hundred feet, or, or tomorrow, if you all would pass this, at a hundred and fifty feet, they don't incur any greater cost. The cost is on the city.
But anything over a hundred and fifty feet, they would?
No, the, the city, the sanitary board could choose not to require them to connect if they're further than a hundred and fifty feet away from their property line.
But if they
As it is now, it's a hundred feet.
I understand.
Yeah.
But if they want to connect.
They want to connect?
Yeah, if they want to.
If they want to, well, they would be required to connect if a, if a sewer line is with a hundred and fifty feet of their property.
Okay. What if it's beyond that and they wanted to connect?
Hmm, that, that would be a sanitary board choice then. It, it might get too expensive.
That's what I'm, okay.
That's what I'm saying, can we not require and pass the cost on, I think that's what Tom was moving to, to the property owner?
No, sir, not off your property.
Not off your property.
Not off your property, and this is, this is
I guess what I'm saying is a gas company runs it up to your property line. You're responsible from your house to the property line.
Correct. And you are with sewer as well.
Okay. But I hate the concept in the city of
Having to go fifty feet further?
No, no, people not connecting to the sewer.
Right, and this would make it more likely that you would be required
Will.
to connect.
Then they'd have to undergo, then they'd have to undergo all the county regulations in terms of septic tank and drainage and soil tests and stuff.
Right.
So they'd have to provide for something run, run it out into
Right.
You don't have any properties within the city limits that are not served with sewer.
Very, very few, but there are some, but a very small percentage.
But the state law, unless it's been changed, that if you have gravity sewer within a hundred feet of your property, you have to
Right.
So this wouldn't alter that.
No, and, and the Public Service Commission has told us that we have to by ordinance establish
A distance.
the distance
Okay.
Off the property line. So it would be the same expense for the property owner to go from his home to the edge of his property. We're not increasing that expense. What we are increasing is that if we get now a hundred and twenty-five or a hundred and fifty feet within that property line, then they're required to make that connection. Unless it involves a pump station where, where their property sits below the main sewer line. And then they will not be required to make a connection.
I move we expand the hundred feet to a hundred and fifty feet.
I, I will second that motion. The property moved in second, any discussion?
And this is the first, I mean, this is our ordinance, is the first reading.
First reading. All right.
Any more discussion? Hearing now we vote the motion, all those in favor signify saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion's agreed to, seven zero. Approval of service line warranties, fall campaign mailing, Mr. Hannabas.
And I think you all had a chance to review the, the literature, this is just a fall campaign. I like to let council be aware that, that we do this each year. I think it's a good thing, I don't get complaints. Uh, it gives property owners an option to basically ensure their, uh, utility lines, water and in sewer, in this case, they're, uh, recognized vendor by the West Virginia Municipal League. You can choose to, you've all got the mailings, I, I get them. You can choose to participate or not. But our name is on them, as you see the, you know, documents I've provided, so.
Does the city get any kind of, of money from this?
Yes, they do.
How much does it get?
If you remember, Demita.
No, it's a percent, I mean, it's not even a percent, it's a, yeah, it is a percentage of how many people sign up. We haven't gotten any for a while.
It's only when they sign up, it's not every year from the same customers.
Right.
I'll, I'll make a motion that we approve the fall campaign mailing for service line warranties.
Is there a second? I'll second it. Property moved in second, any more discussion? Hearing now we vote the motion, all those in favor signify saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion's agreed to, seven zero. Shannon Benson, Diane Jenny still on, is she muted or what?
With the sleep.
She's still there. Diane, are you still, are you still there? She might be.
Hey, hold on, I'm trying to get my mute button off.
Okay, we just wanted to make sure you were there.
There we are, okay.
Thank you.
We apologize.
Okay, uh, we have previously handled item number fifteen.
And sixteen.
And sixteen, let me scroll through that.
Down to seventeen on future agenda items.
Okay.
Future agenda items, uh, ward one. Future agenda items, uh, Ward one.
Nothing, Mayor.
I have three.
All right.
It was my understanding that we were going to be providing a list of economic coordinator applicants.
Okay, I I have those, I have seven, I just received one Friday. Uh, the latest one I received was Friday. I have those, if you want to, if you want to review them or or whatever, and I'll prepare to interview those, but I'm still, not tons of them, but I'm still receiving those.
Would you, could you make those available to us by email?
I will.
Okay, the other, the appraisal, obviously, you talked with Ray Toll and I talked with Ray Toll. He said he would have it this week. Could you also make that available for us to come in, pick up, or whatever?
Sure.
Convenient for you. And Mr. Oxley?
Yes.
Not to put you on the spot, but when we early on met about the economic development coordinator job, if you recall, we talked about annexation at Country Club, and at that time, you were very familiar with the benefits of Sam Jasper agreeing to come into the city. And you, if I'm in there, correct me, and you indicated perhaps that you would talk to Sam and explain to him how it would benefit him to come into the city.
I'll be glad to.
Would you still consider doing that?
Oh, yeah, yeah, I don't, you know, he doesn't come home that much, but I do think I still have his phone number.
I've got his number for you.
And I I I who, was it Steve or has one mentioned something about the use of that? And of course, to use it as we would like to would cost us some money, but getting back to what me and Charles and Tez was talking about a while ago, it's gonna be a future agenda item, but yeah, I'll be glad to get in touch with him and just feel him out, see how that might work.
And and you explained to us, you know, the benefit for him coming into the city if he sells or so forth.
And and we, you know, we served some of that area out there with sewer through Woodland Amendment, Woody Dubin and that crew right there, so, yeah, I'll get with you.
It's all I have.
I was talking to a realtor who's been, who works that property, the old Country Club, he said he's had several recent people visiting who are expressing interest in the building and the and the sixty-two acres, I think.
It's nice property.
But he said no one signed on the dotted line, no one signed.
We get it in the city before they buy it.
I'm just telling, I'm just telling you, there there is some movement there, I, because I was talking to him oh, a few weeks back, and he was telling me about it, he said he had nobody ready to sign up to buy it, so, but I'd, but it's not just uh, not not getting some attention.
So, were there any of those things that actually needed on the agenda?
No.
Okay.
Mr. Oxley at large.
As Charles and Tez and I were talking about a while ago, a lot of communities and counties are having public meetings on the suggested uses of ARP months. Now, we know that the auditor was here and he's not going to tell us what we can or cannot do until we submit project to us. So we thought maybe we would have public meeting or more to get input from the community. And and the reasonable ones prioritizing and and prepare a list to send to the auditor. I mean, I, we just did one in Wyoming County last week, uh, County Commission, millions to give to projects and I I don't think that we're, ours is three point three seven million, is that correct? And and you heard uh Austin that night out here, he couldn't say yea or nay or something unless it was really outlandish, and then, but I think we ought to do that, I mean, that's.
You you want to have it in conjunction with the city council meeting or a separate meeting?
Separate meeting probably be best.
Okay.
You know, just to.
So, so this is do you want us to an- announce that and have a?
I'd say announce it at our next council meeting.
Next council meeting.
And then it could be done at a given time, you know, published and all that.
Okay.
Get it on the website.
So put that on the agenda as an item, okay.
And that's all I have.
All right, Ward two. Councilman?
Nothing, Mayor. I don't have anything. Smallwood, what did we ever do with the street vendor, vendor ordinance?
It is, uh, it was, we we had a meeting, the committee had a meeting and decided to have the next meeting, and there was a couple of folks here from the committee on a day after tomorrow. And Diane asked if we could delay, I I want to have it quicker, but she asked if we could delay it because of her surgery. Is that a fair assessment, Diane?
Yes, sir.
You say it was scheduled for day after tomorrow?
Yes, sir, I'm I'm pretty sure from memory, I'm pretty sure it's day after tomorrow, very, very soon.
You're going post pilot?
Till today after tomorrow, we.
Oh, okay.
I I wanted it sooner, we all talked about having it sooner, but it ended up being the fifteenth of this month.
What time's that, where is it?
I'll have to look in my, in my calendar. It's gonna be here. Just one minute.
Seemed like it was at six o'clock, Bill.
That sounds about right. Well, it it's six PM, I have it six AM in my phone, but I believe, I believe it's six PM.
Okay, and that's again this Thursday.
Correct.
Thursday or Wednesday?
Fifteenth is the Wednesday.
Fifteenth.
Oh, it's Wednesday. Tomorrow.
No, tomorrow's Tuesday, you're right.
Well, we've been on this call for so long, I don't even know what day it is. Hey, my input is how do we shorten these meetings and stick strictly to the agenda?
We've we've listened to the future agenda items, I don't have any, Mr. Hannabass. The next council meeting will be held on October eleventh, twenty twenty-one, at six thirty in council chambers. With no other business but for the city council, I declare the meeting adjourned.
Hallelujah.
Had a lady call me, wanted to watch this one. I said, when you pass out, I said, you can, that'd be the end.
Thank you, I see you.